So, we don't have a quorum.
I'm colorblind.
But we can cover some materials that don't require action. And then we'll move on from there. A reminder to any guests, we're happy to have you here, number one. And number two, please do remember to sign in over at the table over there. We'll be getting to a -- an opportunity for public to be heard very shortly. To begin with, I would like to introduce the board's newest member, Sabina Broschu, sitting here to my right. Sabina is a remarkably accomplished young woman. Just to mention a few things, she has been a legislative page, so she's seen it the best and the worst. She is a very accomplished ice hockey player on the state championship team, under 16, last year.
Few years back.
Few years back. She, as a fourth grader, spent a semester in Slovakia, studying in school, speaking Slovak the whole time, which is pretty impressive, I think. And many, many other accomplishments. We're really delighted to have you with us, Sabina.
Thank you.
Let's go around and just introduce ourselves, starting with Bill.
Bill Mathis, Goshen.
Dan Fred, Secretary of Education.
Jenna O'Farrell, St. Tonsbury.
Peter Pelz, Woodbury.
And I'm John Carroll from Narch. And I'm the acting chair, simply by virtue of the fact that I am the vice chair. And the chair has resigned from the board, and that leaves these people stuck with me for at least a couple more minutes. The amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments to the agenda? I do want to, this is not an amendment exactly, but I want to just clarify. In an earlier version of the agenda, we had visualized having a discussion about what we call guidelines for members' participation in political campaigns. A topic that had been thrust upon us in recent weeks. We will have that conversation. We all concur that such a conversation is much needed. We will have that conversation at our September meeting. We just, I think we all feel that it's a little early, and we all need to be thinking more about it. And we wanted to keep that conversation separate from what we regard as a warm, appreciative celebration of our former chair, who will be here at noon to be honored by this body. We'll have to hold off on the consent agenda. Are there any board members' announcements or reports? Bill, you usually have something you want to hold on. Do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nothing worthwhile.
Well, okay. It hasn't stopped you in the past.
Well, it would be novel to have that criteria. It would shorten the meetings, I'm sure.
Okay. Nothing, anybody else have any reports that they'd like to share? Peter?
Other than just that schools opened in the early southwest, and we have a new superintendent, Adam Rosenberg, comes from Brooklyn Central, I think, and he's got some good ideas. And I think with Act 46, things are coalescing very well. And there's a common commitment and energy devoted to just the best needs of students as in a broader context now. And the new board is working very well together.
Very good. Thank you. Jenna? Okay. Thank you. So let us move on to, we're racing ahead of schedule, but not by much, to item C on the agenda. We're skipping item B for now. Item C on the agenda, public to be heard. Don Penny, would you like to begin? Please come to the table here, introduce yourself for the record, and give us your thoughts.
So, Don Penny, I'm a 31-year veteran English teacher from South Hero, and currently serve as president of Vermont NEA. My primary purpose for being here today is to distribute to you our survey results that we conducted in the spring regarding PBGRs and PLPs. So I had been requested by the House Ed Committee to testify on the state of PBGRs. They had heard from constituents and others that there was concerns around it. And in that testimony, realized I really didn't have a great handle on our members' experiences of PBGRs and PLPs. Because, and as I said, at that time, they were all over the map. It very dependent upon what professional development activities, the approach that each individual district took. So with the help of our NEA headquarters and the research experts down there, surveyed over a thousand of our members, and I've presented the survey. I've shared the survey results with the Secretary of Education as well. And one of the, I guess, conclusions, the one conclusion we can certainly make is that we, as I had stated to the House Ed Committee, we definitely are all over the map in terms of the experience that our members have. Just a couple of notes, I just want to make sure that this is simply from our members' experience. So this is really, I guess, would be considered anecdotal evidence, more that this is not a survey of test scores and all of that. Simply what our members are experiencing with their students and seeing in their students. Couple of, I think, very important findings is that they're noticing a decline in work ethic. And it's, and even, and again, this is anecdotal, but in talking with educators in various schools, schools where things are going well, where it has been implemented well, one of the side effects that I don't think people saw coming was with the multiple approaches, right, with multiple chances to demonstrate proficiency, many students are saying, "Well, I'm just not going to really try that hard essentially for the first go around." And they continue to, you know, realize that there's nothing on the line at the first attempt. So I think that's one thing that, as a profession, we need to dive into. The other concerning thing, and again, there seems to be a correlation, it's not necessarily a causation, but there's, our members are experiencing seeing a decline in content knowledge. And I think one of the great indicators really is in our CTE programs, because our CTE educators continue to administer the tests and exams for their professions, right? So allied health, building trades, culinary, all of that. And one of the things those who are keeping track of that information have let me know that what they are seeing is a decline on those test results over the years now. Is it, can we connect the dots directly? That's for smarter researchers than I to figure out, so. And again, it's, this is what we have. So, and it also seems to be a real wide range of professional development opportunities in what was the level of engagement of educators.
You said that was teacher perception. Did it come through in terms of the test results themselves? Did you see the actual numbers?
Well, with regard to the CTE educators, they were looking specifically at test results. And that was limited to a couple of areas, right? So one specific was an allied health program. So that was not their perception, that was a direct, they have the data directly related to the test scores on those professional exams that the kids take. And maybe that's an area of research to do, is to look at how those scores.
I question the causal connection to Act 77 relative to what preceded in terms of kids' participation in test scores and whatnot. I believe they were already indicating a decline. And I'm wondering how much the, you can attribute this to just that, because certainly the intent, and the intent was to get these kids by alternative methods of teaching and engagement. And with, you know, the broader full person kind of perspective. And I would, I wouldn't doubt that, that there are, I know there are issues, but I think the intent and from, what I'm hearing is that in some regards, some programs are working really well. And it is very scattered. It's not, it's not.
Absolutely. And again, I really want to caution all of us not to make any causation, you know, conclusions. And again, it's correlated, but there are a lot of other factors in that as well. The scattered piece is one of the things I think is really important for this body to look at. And, you know, I was going on the, based on what I had heard from various members, and members usually don't call me up and tell me how wonderful things are going.
Right, right.
So my question was around, well, how is it going across the state? And what we see is really sort of an affirmation of the fact that yes, in fact, it is very scattered, it is all over the map. There's certainly schools, Winuski being one of them, and certainly over Mount Mansfield, where everything is run very smoothly and effectively, that those schools, Burlington, Bradlboro, things are going very well. The Waterbury area folks are doing a great job as well. So I don't, and no way am I, does this reach the conclusion that things are not working, but not as well as we think across the board.
Do you think had there been a statewide plan, in terms of common plan, that would have been applied, rather than at the district level, to create these programs and change, would have made a difference?
I don't know. I mean, it's always a difficult one to say, because if you talk about a statewide plan, it's still an implementation of the plan, right? And I think it's, I think there were a lot of challenges in that process. I always am leery of a, of some, something being imposed by the state.
Was there any parties or individuals that were helping in training or transition in this, that were not directly associated with the school itself, you know, at large to help the implementation?
Well, I think that, I think many districts had consultants come in and work with them. And I think, again, you see a wide range of schools that had, you know, who came in to work with them. And, you know, and some were just left to, left on their own. Again, where the resources were, there was, there are a couple of places that I know that had very large grants, they were able to bring in consultants who did a lot of community outreach, et cetera. But again, that was not across the state.
Don, you've used the word scattered. What is it precisely that is scattered?
Oh, I think what I meant by scattered is the experience of the implementation of PBGRs and PLPs is scattered. It hasn't been consistently administered and implemented across the state.
So when you say the experience, are you describing the degree or extent to which it has been rolled out in individual?
Right. I think that.
Districts, or the degree of satisfaction of the teachers about it?
Well, I think there's a connection there, right? I mean, I think where you had, you know, educators engaged in the process from the very start, that seems to be, those schools seem to be doing a better job, because I think you had, you had a, for lack of better terms, a buy-in, let's say, from the educators who understood what it was, as opposed to, oh, we have to do this new initiative because the state tells us.
So if, if the data could be, or the responses could be parsed into two groups, schools with fairly mature rollouts, and schools still in process, if you will, are there any differences between those two groups in these two indicators about content knowledge, so-called decline in content knowledge, or the so-called decline in work ethic? Do you see a difference between early rollout, late rollout?
That's beyond what we've conducted in terms of the, I mean, we could perhaps go back into that. You know, I'd have to check with the folks who have the data. I think that's an interesting question to find out. I mean, and if, well, one, I know of one teacher who is a great proponent of the new approach and feels it's going very well, but did say that they're even finding that the work ethic and the rigor is, has been decreasing, but does, in no way wants to toss out the new approach.
But that's one data point.
But that's a one data point. And again, maybe, maybe, maybe this survey, maybe we need more specific questions in specific areas. Or perhaps superintendents and principals and our members can look at this data statewide and say, okay, well, let's unpack it a little bit more in our district.
Obviously, just that handed.
Sure.
Do, and maybe that's in taking a deeper dive into the data, but for me, what's striking is the slide 22 and 23, where you have a large percentage of teachers saying they're confident in their ability to implement PLPs on slide 22. And then on slide 23, reporting majority of students being disengaged.
Right.
So if we have confident teachers and disengaged students.
Right.
That's the gap there, right? So looking at, when you take this back to your constituents, like, what do they make, what are their recommendations closing that gap?
Right. And again, that, I think that's, I mean, my hope would be that those conversations happen locally, right? That we see that. And I think that there are people who believe in the PLP process, but that the students haven't taken to it and don't see it as something that is worth their while.
There was a reaction from the sort of traditional Carnegie Unit college-track students versus those with this new approach, that some people felt like it was going to negatively impact kids' chances to get to college if they went and went into this. Apparently, the colleges don't think so, but there was a reaction. Did you look at that in terms of how that?
No, because that would, I mean, that's, we're surveying our members for what they're seeing, and I think that would be something that would be more specific to parents and students, to ask them. I do, I think it would be interesting to look at how different guidance departments have handled the transcript and all that, because again, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of consistency there. You know, so I, and, you know, I don't know exactly how one would find out all of that information. And it also means, well, how do we know for another five, six, seven years when those students are at the university level academics, as well as in the trades, right?
Was it this year or next year that the, that this is fully implemented in terms of graduate, the year of graduation?
2020 was the original.
This was the year?
Right. And, but I think one of the things that I appreciate about the secretary's statement around the deadline, right, it's like not, not to put too much weight on a specific deadline, right? This is sort of ongoing.
Excuse me, Don, we have another, one more question here. Bill?
I'm just noticing on pages nine through 13, that a majority of the teachers are reporting that they haven't been prepared for this, that, or the other initiative. Well, that's kind of stunning. And it has a lot to say about how well we're going to be able to go forward on these initiatives. Any comments on this?
I think the professional development piece is always a challenge, right? And we're seeing that in a variety of areas. It's going to be a challenge around ethnic studies, it's a challenge around trauma-informed instruction, and it certainly is a challenge here with this huge shift. I think in my own experience, when I was teaching in St. Albans, was you have a very small number of teachers who go off for the training, and then there doesn't seem to be time built in then to, to essentially have the, have those educators teach the educators who didn't go to the conference. And there's, and I think part of the, part of the problem around the professional development piece, and there, you know, there are other folks who may want to speak to this, but one of the things that happened, because the grading system kind of went hand in glove with the change, which seemed to be a need to do that, what happened was that the grading system became sort of front and center, as opposed to what was at the core of the objective of proficiency-based graduation requirements in terms of how do you reach that proficiency, right? So that tends to be, I think, sidetracked a lot of the conversation. And that people spent hours trying to figure out new computer programmings for the grading and the reporting of the grading, as opposed to what were students actually doing.
Good. Don, we want to thank you very much.
Sure.
We're delighted to have not only your report, but also a chance to discuss it with you. Thank you so much.
And we will, we will continue to conduct surveys. We do have the technology, we do have the support of our national organization. So if there are further questions that you want us to put, we will probably most likely send one out in a few weeks. I don't want to interfere with the AOE survey on school climate and all, so I want to get it out earlier than later. But if you feel that certain questions that you want to ask, just simply email me and we'll include that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the public who wish to be heard at this time? Yes, please. Please come up, identify yourself.
My name's Jackie McEwen. I sent out a memo to you folks and some other constituencies last night. I'm here just to share that orally with you, if you haven't read it. But I'm also happy to respond to questions or comments. I'm a retired teacher. I taught for 35 years in Vermont and two years in New Hampshire. A mother, a mother of a teacher, a grandmother of three. And my issue is that, my goal is to advocate for school safety and cultural safety to come to the top of your strategic plan.
Jackie, we'd love to hear from you. Can you do it in five minutes?
Yes. Would you like me to read it, if you have not?
We, I think, did you send it to all board members?
I did.
Yes. So why don't you just talk about it?
So basically, what I'm looking for is a brand-new approach, a way of thinking about addressing gun violence, but also just unhappy, angry, traumatized children who turn into angry, traumatized, unhappy adults. I think that the approach needs to be collaborative across agencies. And I think that there are many, many good ideas out there. I don't propose that I am at all here with the answers or with any particular expertise. I think that there are new things to think about. I think thinking about the role of parents is something that is difficult and very complex, but has to be addressed if we're going to improve on this. Thinking about the role of knowledge, there is a lot of good information about social, emotional learning curriculum out there, a lot of research that supports the positive impacts it has on children and their outcomes as adults. And I think that data collection on that and addressing that systemically across the state would be a good step in the right direction. Communication across agencies, I was also a special ed director for seven years, and experienced the frustration of sharing information across multiple agencies when families were in need of support. As well as politicians getting on board. It's the time for thoughts and prayers and hand wringing are over. And I worry, today's the first day of school, I'm thinking about my daughter, who's a teacher. And in a few years, I'll have three grandchildren in public school, and I will think about them every single day. I've experienced my own real-time, real-life lockdown drills in schools, and drills, and seen the terrified looks on the faces of children. And I just want this to be our number-one priority in the state. So I'm here to help. I don't know what I can do, I'm not an expert in anything, but I bring a long historical view of education to you. I've taught in one-room schoolhouses, two-room schoolhouses, and started in 1980, so I have a broad view of where we were and where we are now.
Good.
So that's why I'm here.
Thank you for your engagement with this. Peter?
No, I think this is, this is an issue that's here to stay and has to be dealt with. So, thank you.
And I think we hear you about your daughter, your grandchildren, and they was, are in similar situations and feel the same kind of personal concern.
Yeah.
I think I can speak for the board and say that this is a topic that we want to figure out where we should go with it, what should be our role in this conversation, better yet, this transformation. I mean, talking about it's great, someday we need to change things. The board, in its September meeting, takes a whole day for taking the long view and the big picture. And I think we'll be sure that this topic will be among those that we say, what should be our role about this? How do we be part of the solution on that? So we think. Bill, do you have a question or a comment?
I think, a comment, I think it's a bigger problem than just us in this group meeting here. It's a social problem.
Yeah.
It's also looking back to maybe some things that happened in children's lives with their family, society, the schools, all playing a part. But it doesn't lend itself to an easy solution, and I worry about it.
Joe?
Yes?
You know, this is my own opinion, I also oversee our local police department. I think one of the easiest things that you can do is to ensure that there's a, that there's a line of communication between the police department and the school, too. And even, you know, I'm a believer that police departments shouldn't be in schools only when things go bad. They should be eating lunch there, especially if the food's good. They should, they should have that sort of relationship with the school. And I think in some schools that I've seen, the police department only shows up, if the police department shows up, everyone talks about it because of the police department's here. Something must have gone wrong. And it really shouldn't be that sort of environment. It should be, oh, well, the police department is here, and they're just talking to the principal, or talking to the kindergarten teacher, or talking to the lunch staff.
Okay. I'm mindful of our time and schedule.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, Callie and Beck, who was a student representative on the board here, my first meeting, one of her last meetings in April, she spoke to a smaller group of us about the importance of social, emotional learning and feeling safe in school. And I think those were really powerful words from a senior who'd been through public school and graduated, and really felt that she wanted to be heard around the importance of excellence being viewed as a social competency. And really, how powerful it is to feel safe at school and working in schools, that teachers feel safe in school, too. And I, that's all information that the board heard and will consider moving forward.
Great.
Jackie, thank you very much. You came up from Heartland?
Weatherfield.
Weatherfield?
Yeah.
Most notably.
I was just, I'm appreciative of your holistic commentary on the topic, social, emotional learning, it's not. learning, it's not simply gun violence, but it's among the issues to consider. And I think that is, I think, the broader view, that it could be something that may be able to be impactful and think systemically around shared information at the state level and what our school districts are doing as systems to support safe learning environments for students and safe, healthy adults.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Well, welcome, board members who just got here out of traffic. We're glad you're here. We now have a quorum.
Construction on the first day, I suppose.
So we're going to flip back to our...
Nothing was moving, so I apologize.
Understood.
Your patience.
We're going to double back now to item B, consent agenda and board announcements. Is there, excuse me, a motion with regard to the minutes of the meeting?
Take a motion that they're approved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the meeting as presented. Any discussion? You ready to vote? Those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous, the ayes have it. Excuse me. The second item on the agenda is the Chittenden East Supervisory Union confirming its designation as a school supervisory district. Is there a motion with regard to that item? You have the information on the green sheet. It's been moved to approve and confirm the designation of Chittenden East Supervisory Union as a supervisory district. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Are you ready for the question? Those in favor of approving the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. That completes our work on items A, B, and C. We'll now go on to item D, the subject called Board Leadership. And I'm going to introduce the topic, if I may, by saying that our former chair has, as you know, resigned, really only about four months into her second term as leader of this board. Typically, elections are in March. I think this year, we didn't get to it until April because we were waiting for some new members to join. And so there's about a year and a half remaining on the term of the former chair. In theory, at least, the vice chair would automatically ascend to the role of chair, but this vice chair, at least, feels that the board ought to have an opportunity to choose again who its leader is, proactively choose rather than just inherit an officer. And so I would welcome a motion that we conduct an election for the chair of this board. Peter?
Yes, I'd like to move that the board now conduct an election to select a chair to serve out the remainder of the former chair's term.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded that the board conduct an election to choose a chair to serve out the remainder of the former chair's term, which would be approximately February, March, or April of 2021. Is there discussion? Are you ready for the vote? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Therefore, I will happily turn the gavel over to the non-voting member, senior member of the board.
So what I'd do is I'll entertain nominations for the position of chair. I don't need seconds, just nominations. Are there any nominations for a chair of the State Board of Education?
Bill has one.
I'll nominate John Carroll.
John Carroll's been the nomination. Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of John Carroll as chairperson of the State Board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
I'll imagine that. Thank you. Thank you for the nomination, Bill. I noticed that you were sort of holding back and... But thank you for that. So that means you don't have a vice chair, so we should conduct an election to choose a vice chair to serve out the term of the former vice chair. Got that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Shall I ask a question, I guess a parliamentary inquiry? Could you have more than one vice chair or...
It is possible.
It is possible.
So far as I know. I look to legal counsel. Maybe, Bill, you can recall verbatim the language of statute in this topic? No?
I'm afraid not.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? For what purpose?
Just to share the load more or have specific duties for the vice chair. I'm also sensitive to the current chair and the former chairs on how much work is entailed in running this ship.
I can only say from being vice chair that the duties are not really defined.
It's kind of like vice president, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. I think it's a matter of treaty between the chair and the vice chair as to how the work gets divvied up, if it gets divvied up at all.
Does the chair have any thoughts on whether he would, I mean, it's really...
Yeah.
The chair and the vice chair should have a relationship that works well.
Right.
And understanding, so I guess I'd be interested in the chairman's thoughts on...
Thank you. Yeah, I have thoughts. First of all, I, it's my thought to serve out this term, but it is not my thought to go on indefinitely being chair of this body for a lot of reasons, partly because I'm 76 and slowing down maybe. But more than that, there's a new generation of board members, all of whom are much younger than I, and I think it would be really good to have that new generation preparing itself to become the leadership of this group. So I see my term as one of transition and maybe even training to bring others on board in leadership. And so it would be my hope to have a vice chair or chairs, if that is the will of the board, who can, in time, become more actively involved in agenda-setting and shaping the work of the board, doing the legwork that's involved, serving as chairs of various committees that the board might create. Does that answer your question?
It does, I believe. Yes.
So let's begin to invite nominations and see where we want to go from there. Is that all right? Or do you want to decide in advance that you wish to have a single vice chair or two? Bill?
I would like to suggest that we have a single vice chair and recommend to the chair and the vice chair that they be as collaborative as possible in terms of involving other people in committees. I think we could do a lot better in that regard, and I'm ready to make a nomination.
Okay. All right. Please do.
Jenna Farrell.
The name of Jenna Farrell has been placed in nomination for the position of vice chair to serve out the remainder of the term of the former vice chair. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, then the question before you is, shall Jenna Farrell be elected as vice chair to serve out the term of the former vice chair? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And Jenna Farrell is unanimously chosen as vice chair plus your heart.
That's yours.
You're in the deep end of the pool now.
I take the former vice chair's advice to heart. I think that we can do, I don't want to say a better job, we'll do a good job of engaging those who have the time and energy and interest to be engaged later on, perhaps today and certainly during the, during our retreat day. I'm hopeful that this body will create some, sort of what you might call special interest working groups, working groups who will focus on certain topic areas that are surely of high priority to this board in the next 18 months, a real obvious one being reform of special education. This board, after all, is at the pivot point about formulating and adopting the rules that will govern special education for some time. Nothing goes forward until this board does that, and so it's a very, very significant responsibility, an amazingly complex area that I begin to comprehend and need to, my goal is to draw in members of this board who have expertise and/or interest in that area into a working group that does the legwork for this board, because we have a lot of work to do. And there may be other topic areas that will be identified during the retreat where we should form some working subgroups or subcommittees of the board for those purposes. If you're comfortable with that, then I would like to move on and add into this section of our conversation a, your approval, I am asking your approval, of a resolution that we have prepared in honor of our former chair. If you would distribute that around. And I'll give you a moment to read it, and it will be read publicly when our former chair is with us at noon time for lunch. Just by way of clarification, at noon, we will be taking our meal upstairs in the small dining room at the Cath. Connor's going to come and photograph it, videotape it, and Krista will be joining us. I'm hopeful that her daughter Cora will be joining us. Her husband Nick is at work and unable to be with us. And so this, we would like to read this resolution to Krista and to give her a framed copy of it. I trust that this meets with your approval. We also have a gift for Cora, for Krista, and maybe it's not a gift, but we also plan to sing a song, don't we?
Could be a gift.
Oh, no.
I don't know.
You're a great singer. You're just a snob about music. Yeah, you're very, anybody who's really particular about what they sing will have difficulty with this, but we have, we have a duty to sing just for the fun of it and to praise our former chair, for whom I think we all feel both admiration and affection. So that's the plan at noon, and if there are any other questions or comments about all of that, I'm happy to hear that. All right, then we are done with items A through D, and that means those who got here late can go and have some coffee. Remember, we're not able to bring any refreshments, not even coffee, here into this room, but room 10 across the way has all that you need, and we'll be back in about 10 minutes. Okay? Thank you. We are at item E, the secretary's report. Sir, it's all yours.
Good morning. I just wanted to briefly call to your attention this issue we call a policy work plan. This isn't the best room to present this. It is a live webpage. If you get a chance to go to our website and under the About Us section, which recently was redone, you will see at the bottom of that page some narrative and a link to what we're calling our policy work plan. So I wanted to call that to your attention and also, as we go into the retreat in September, offer you the opportunity to include, if the board develops a work plan, I know the prior chair was sort of providing that sort of guidance to you, that that's something you might want to consider, we'd be happy to include your schedule of work as well. But if you would, between now and the retreat, get a chance to go to our About Us page and look at the policy work plan. There's an explanation of what it is, as well as, it's basically a Gantt chart that lays out the major deliverables of the policies that we are implementing, which are, as you know, rather complex. So we felt the need to, for our own internal coherence, but also to our various stakeholder groups, be very overt and advertise how we see the work being delivered, where the milestones will fall, and we think that'll be helpful for everyone to know when, as the different issues come up. It's not, it's not a schedule of everything we're doing at the agency, it's just a description of how we're implementing all the major policies that are in play right now.
And the major ones being, obviously, 173. What are the other major parts?
So 173, certainly, there's not much on Act 46 in the work plan right now, but we have the centralization of the school finance program, what's called the unfortunate acronym of SSDDMS. So that's, that's a major initiative in itself, certainly 173 and its major components. We have the report card, you know, as you're, you've heard about that, so we have some deliverables on that as well. But those, those are the major initiatives, and you'll see the subparts of those. And we also included a list of all the legislative reports that are coming in, so we're just trying to, once again, just to, so we can advertise the various stakeholder groups and the public at large, you know, how we're approaching the different issues.
Any questions for the secretary on the policy work plan? Excuse me, we will talk later about the state board's work plan with regard to Act 173, and we will, I think, try to really flesh that out at the September meeting.
Would it be simple like that at a meeting with a better AV? We'd have the opportunity for you to walk us through a little. I'm on it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to intend to do. It just, I knew it wouldn't project well in this room.
Yeah, it's challenging to follow it.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to walk through it.
Thank you.
But as you'll see, if you get into it, it's a link out to a sort of a live system, so we'll be making adjustments for that as, as the work develops, but it gives people an idea where we are in the different subparts, milestones, and so forth, and hopefully, you know, that will lend itself to some coherence as we implement policies.
Do you recall the EQS deadline for populating all pieces of it?
We have snapshots on our schedule for policy work plan. We have another snapshot of the data going in in this month, coming up in September, then we have another release in December, but even at that point, not all aspects will be fully implemented.
Other questions or concerns?
To give an example to Bill's question, one of the key elements is school climate survey. That whole initiative is still in the early phases of selecting a vendor and so forth, so that won't even be, you know, implemented in schools until late spring at the earliest, possibly next year as a pilot. So that, that's a key component of sort of getting the balance in the snapshot. That, that won't be complete for another year at least.
Okay, you have your timelines on the website?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. The point is to have a really frank and open conversation of those deliverables so people understand, you know, where that is.
John? Oh, Kim?
Just if I can plug the, whatever is necessary to move that process along, it sounds, feels as though we've been on hold in our, I'm going to put my other hat, school board hat, in not implementing our own climate surveys, waiting for this statewide survey to, and I think that as districts are merging, climate is critical to culture and implementing change. So to the extent this would be ready for use in the spring and be useful for planning in the summer for districts for the following year, that would be really very... in the summer for districts for the following year, that would be really very important, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, everything's really important, so part of the, let me say, the approach is to just admire all the different pieces of the work and to be very clear about when deliverables are coming in. But, yeah, it's not to acknowledge that some things are not important, but we do have infrastructure priorities. In order to implement the school climate survey, we have to have some infrastructure in place to do that, so. But to the point that's been raised on several occasions, it was never, in still, my opinion, that would never, the report card, the snapshot, was never meant to be implemented all at once. It's just not possible. Some of these issues were never resolved, and this predates my arrival as secretary. So there's issues and aspects of the report card that still, we still need to work on inside the agency, and issues like the school climate survey obviously need to be piloted and so forth. So there's, you know, those things, obviously, were not meant to all be done at once, so.
Is that the only major piece that's still in development?
I don't have confidence on answering that directly, but what we would like to do is for your next meeting, is schedule our data team to do a presentation. I think that's the piece, the last piece is sort of your, I would say, formative learning on measuring quality that you haven't heard from yet. So you've heard, you heard last time from Patrick on sort of the programmatic lens on the snapshot. What I'd like to do is bring in the data team to speak to you about the broader infrastructure work that they're doing, and they're the folks that are sort of on the backside of all our data pieces, so you can have an understanding of what their vision is and how that work is progressing. So I think they'd be able to answer that question directly for you.
Yes, John.
Circle back to Kim. You wouldn't recommend that, at the local level, that schools put off doing their own climate surveys or anything that they're waiting for the AOE to populate? Would you think locally that should be on hold while they wait, or?
I think, you know, I, as a superintendent, I had my own initiative on a school climate survey, and I know other superintendents do as well. I think that's an open question until we understand what the content of the climate surveys are, you know, so what's the content of our statewide one will be relative to what your local needs might be. But it would be my hope that ours would serve a broad purpose, particularly for those districts who didn't have the resources to have their own school climate survey. And hopefully, that will provide a good statewide picture of what's going on in schools in that area. But I, you know, I can't answer that question essentially. But if we can get very clear about the content, is I think then local decision makers can decide whether it's sufficient to meet their needs or not.
Other comments? Yes, Kim.
I think that part of the delay has been part of the moving target about when we might see it, but also I think there's a certain sense of sort of survey weariness that you don't want to have come into play before that which is going to be needed to populate becomes available, so.
Yeah, and that's been a big part of, as much as we look at our own, you know, infrastructure and ability to deliver on things, we're also considering what the field can digest and when they can digest it, so it's an important consideration. And I was telling a few people on break, that's part of the reason why we're producing the policy work plan at this particular moment in time, because we have large, major structural policies in play right now in the state. You know, Act 46 gets limited treatment, as you'll see on our policy work plan, but it's important to acknowledge, that's been a fundamental restructuring of our organization of our education delivery system. So if you consider that foundational restructuring that's going on, we, on top of that, are now rethinking special education in a fundamental way, putting in statewide data systems for the first time, you know, we have major structural elements all at play at the same time, so it's not so much that they're complex unto themselves, but to try to do this at the same time, we have to be sensitive to the coherence and lack thereof, and how that impacts people to do their jobs at a local level.
I'm reminded of the NEA presentation that started us off this morning.
Right.
In terms of the capacity of the field to absorb these things, and yet there's more things coming, and somehow I think we need to look at what our capacity is and make some decisions about that.
Yeah, I mean, this is frankly, you know, part of my overt attempt to advertise that. It's not, it's not as simple as giving the agency 20 more people. The system itself can only handle so much change while still educating students on a daily basis.
In the field?
In the field, and many of our laudable goals are actually not going to be achieved, in my theory, if we continue to engage in this complex policymaking, so.
And?
Anyway, it'll be a great conversation, so I think for your retreat, I just want to alert you, it's there, and I think it might, if you see it as applicable, we'd be happy to host the state board's work plan, if it develops one on our system as well. But, and then for next time, I'll work with the chair on that, but we'd be happy to have our data team come in and provide that sort of, I think it's the last piece of information you need to engage in that understanding about the quality standards. We spent some time, I believe, in April or May, to the information that Don was talking about on what are the quality standards, and then we brought in the team that's involved in creating the report card, which is how you measure the quality standards, but the last piece would be to understand from the data team's perspective how they build the infrastructure to do all those things. So I think you'd find it really useful, to your deliberations.
Thank you. Peter? Anybody else? Comments? What's that?
I guess my only question and comment is, how much of this is coming from the feds that we're dealing with, and how much can we screen or be selective in terms of response?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, just looking at our plan, the big focus of the major policy before us now is not federal, it's state, and that's Act 173. You could argue special ed is federal-driven, but we've engaged in that as a state for a number of compelling reasons. Certainly, the report card, there's elements of the report card that are driven by federal policy, but our interest in centralizing data systems, the business system and so forth, that's all state, those are the things we did to ourselves, so.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I just wanted to alert you to that product, and I think it'd be useful for our future conversations.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. So we're happily running ahead of schedule by about 15 minutes. Let's move on to item F in our agenda. Since I came in on this agenda-making somewhat late, I'm not quite clear on who is saying what about the two topics, Federal Education Group Report and SPE Work Plan. Is there a presentation with regard to the Federal Education Group Report, either from the agency or from others?
We have our general counsel here, Emily Simmons, who we could invite into this conversation as well, but we were going to comment on, a little bit on Act 173, I believe, and certainly the work plan that I just alluded to, will give you some sense of that, but I wanted to speak to a couple of issues, and I invite Emily to step in here at some point if you'd like. The, in terms of the Federal Education Group Report, I believe the state board received a copy of that.
We did.
Yeah, so we are also digesting that, and we're working with partners to understand its impact on our rulemaking process. If you remember how we originally were laying out the draft rules, the, you know, if you think of, there's law, there's regulation, and then there's guidance that the agency has the ability to do, rules are generally within the purview of the State Board of Education. We had made the decision in our draft to separate out a lot of the financial, the documenting of financial cost, and put it into guidance and take it out of the rule process. So our proposed rules that went to you don't really speak to some of the, many of the issues highlighted in the Federal Education Group Report, mainly, you know, what, how are we going to deal with flexibility documenting cost? We had proposed to deal with that in guidance, so that, we are digesting the Federal Education Group's insight into our construct of special education as a state that will largely impact that guidance work that we're doing. As we work through that guidance report, we might come back and say, you know, we want a few tweaks to our proposed rules, it might, there might be a connection that would be useful to make some modifications there. I just want to underscore that we also found that report very useful. It's making an impact on our guidance documents, that where we're addressing the issue of documenting special education cost, and that work's underway, it's visible on our work plan titled "Documenting Special Education Cost." We also recently are working with 173 in particular, this is more of a general comment, on providing some leadership around getting coherence in the issues that Mr. Tinney had raised earlier on Act 77 and so forth. So we recently released some guidance, I believe yesterday or Monday, that's now circulating over the field, and it's sort of a framing document that talks about how the agency interprets its role relative to implementing Act 173, specifically on the technical guidance that districts will need to address the professional development and curriculum aspects. And similar to the presentation I provided to you at the last meeting, I believe, where I was describing our inclination to more actively leverage some regulations that haven't been actively over implemented from my perspective, relative to requiring school districts to have a coordinated curriculum, a local assessment plan, and needs-based professional development. So we're, this guidance that we produced, I'm not sure if you received a copy of it yet, but we're, our approach is going to be sort of to leverage the current regulation to try to deal with those sort of foundational elements of dealing with issues like Act 77, to ensure school districts, particularly school districts now that Act 46 has basically created a construct where these groups of districts are now required to work as systems, that we want to leverage those issues and really help districts develop district-wide curriculum, whatever that means. We need to get further clarity on that topic, district-wide approaches to local assessment planning, and district-wide approaches to professional development, because that's what the regulations, your regulations require districts to do. Many of those shifts occurred to the SU level as a result of Act 153 in 2010, but we haven't, from my perspective, followed up enough with school districts to see how that's being played out. Particularly with Act 46, I think it's really hard, I think, for us at the agency to understand how districts are going to be successful making the shifts and providing supports to all students if those foundational elements aren't working on a systems basis. So, and as you know, special education also was centralized at the SU level through Act 153 and Act 156. So at any rate, I'll stop there with my general comments, but specific on the Federal Education Group, a lot of that, the insight from that report will impact our guidance documents, and we might come back later with some modifications to rules. We're working with partners to dig into that issue in more detail. And then lastly, we are producing some, have produced some recent guidance, technical guidance around how we envision the support for 173 rolling out to school districts.
Thank you. I would like us to have an opportunity to ask questions or offer comments about the Federal Education Group Report, which some of you, I think, have had a chance to study. Before we do that, I just want to ask, would you like Ms. Simmons to speak about any of this before we begin that conversation?
I don't think so. I mean, I would just invite her to jump in if she felt, she's been leading some of that work internally, so she's got a good handle on some of this.
So, board members, you've studied the Federal Education Group Report. Do you have questions or comments? Bill?
We received a letter from five educational groups that raised some questions about the interpretation, and I was just wondering if we could expand on that or hear what these differences are, and maybe this would call on us, these other representatives from the groups that are here.
Perhaps, are you asking the secretary what is his response to that letter?
Well, I'm asking that, but I also think we should hear from the people who wrote us.
Happy to do that. Would any of you wish to speak to us about that letter and express some of your, or review some of your concerns for the board?
I think if we speak, we should speak as a group, because we're a group now.
All right. There seem to be three chairs here. Imagine that. Is that going to be enough?
One, we need one more chair. I'm going to deliver that chair, but there you go.
Nicole, we're happy to see you're still here with us. How much longer can we enjoy that?
We need more than that. We need, we're trying to match up with the board.
Oh, boy. Yeah. Wow, this is great. Are you ready for this?
Well, it's the board.
The only problem is you can't bring food into the room.
That's right. That keeps us on task. Well, maybe, let's begin with asking you to identify yourselves for the record and for the board. Please, start, Mel.
I'm Mill Moore, Executive Director of Vermont Independent Schools Association.
Nicole Hayes, Executive Director of the Vermont School Boards Association.
Jay Nichols, Executive Director of the Vermont Principals Association.
I'm Tracy Sawyers, and I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont Council of Special Ed Administrators.
Jeff Van, Executive Director of Vermont NEA.
Jeffrey Francis, Executive Director of Vermont Superintendent's Association.
Thank you all. So we all have, I think, has everybody on the board seen the letter of, I think all of you were co-signatures of this letter. Has everybody seen that? Good. So please, tell us what you had in mind.
So I think there are two separate issues that are being perhaps blended together. One is the letter that I think all of us, with the exception of Jeff Van, have signed regarding the June 6th and June 7th memos that were issued by the agency that have now been put on hold for one year, so we can speak to the issues in that letter. And then there is the Federal Education Group Report, which the five of us, with the exception of Phil, worked together to obtain basically an outside opinion about the draft rules that the agency had put forward with respect to funding and Act 173, because we shared a concern that perhaps the draft rules were not aligned with the intent of Act 173 and did not take advantage of the flexibilities that were available through federal law. And so we contacted with this group who has substantial expertise in IDEA and interpreting federal regulation. These attorneys were formerly State Education Association attorneys and have worked with the Council of Chief State Officers on issues related to federal law and regulations. So we were very appreciative of the analysis that they provided. I don't think any of us feel prepared to go through the findings itself. They had, a representative did present to the Act 173 Advisory Group when that group met, and I believe a few of you were present at that meeting and heard what Shira Barak had to say about the findings of the report. But happy to talk with you in terms of why we asked for the analysis and what we're hoping will come of it moving forward, if that helps.
So let's focus on the latter of the two topics that you could be speaking about. It sounds like the first has been addressed or at least put aside for a period of time.
Put aside for now, and I think we all share interest in continuing the conversation about the issues that we laid out in the letter. Delay is good, but we still need to address the issues. In terms of the Federal Education Group Report, the secretary mentioned that we're engaged in ongoing conversations with the legal team at the agency. I believe some of us are meeting tomorrow to try to reconcile the recommendations from, or the findings from the Federal Education Group Report and the draft rules. I think my hope is that we can come to a meeting of the minds in terms of how to construct the rules in a way that maximizes the flexibility available to school districts, understanding that no matter what, districts are obligated to provide services that are called for in a child's IEP, but what level of documentation is required in order to do that, and what constitutes a special education service, I think are big sort of foundational questions that really need to be grappled with before we can move forward with guidance around what documentation is required at the district level. So our hope is that we can keep focused on the intent of Act 173, learn from the analysis that was done by Federal Education Group, as well as other states that are operating within a census block grant model, so that we can, you know, really move forward with implementation of the laws that was envisioned by the General Assembly.
I think that the visual here is... I think that the visual here is indicative of the nature of the work, which contextually Dan referred to. I think that Nicole did a good job with the what and partially the why. What I would add is that particularly with 173, we realize that we are facing a phenomenal amount of work as a system. And each of us has a part in the implementation of the Act and fulfilling what I'd describe as the vision that was created through the legislative process when they looked at the special education delivery system and the funding system that would support that delivery. So in terms of the why, we realize as associations, and we talked about this in making decisions about how we were going to proceed, that if we didn't stay consistent with the expectations under 173 for change in the delivery system to respond to the funding model, then we could find ourselves with bigger challenges frankly than we have today. So as the process of Act 173 implementation came to pass, we decided, based on activity that preceded the involvement of the Federal Education Group, that we needed to check in to make sure that we were not missing opportunities with regard to application of regulations and laws in Vermont. And I was, and I think each of us can probably, in this case, I'm speaking for myself because I have no authority to represent these folks. We were heartened, I think, by the response from the Agency of Education and the Secretary when we got to the point where we had that report and they said, yes, we're going to consider the report from the Federal Education Group and our decisions as we move forward. So I regard that as a good sign. Secretary French, I think, articulated it well when he talked about the sheer magnitude of the work that confronts us, which had all of you shaking your heads in affirmation. We think that the, or I believe that this, my association believes that the strength of our ability to improve public education in Vermont is going to rely on our ability to work together, which means that we won't have differences of opinion, we will. And our involvement of Federal Education Group was try to bring what we saw potentially evolving as a difference of opinion to the table as quickly as we possibly could. So now we've got a report from experts in federal education law who specialize in special education that is intended from us to inform the context of how we move forward, which doesn't mean that we are not going to confront challenges because each of us has a different perspective. We learn that when we work together. The agency has an approach that it takes and the capacity with which to take that approach. The State Board, I think, is, you know, fulfilling its obligations by honing in on what's transpiring and helping to guide it to its role. But we did not engage Federal Education Group without a fair amount of discussion about what it was we wanted to do and why. And what we wanted to do was make sure that in this state, we had a context for what the federal, what the federal law said with regard to options and opportunities in special education.
Can I, Jeff, when you alluded to, or mentioned bigger problems, if this isn't done well, are you, were you suggesting lawsuits on kind of?
No, I mean, and again, you know, it's the way I speak. There's a, this is not unlike Act 60, for those of you who recall the implementation of Act 60. There were tremendous aspirations about what we were going to do for students to create a more equitable learning environment. That was a major selling point of Act 60. There was also a complete school of thought that was we were going to become more efficient and economical as a result. So there were two pieces there. There was a money piece and there was a delivery of education slash quality piece. Act 173 is an evolution of the delivery system, but those two same principles, in my opinion, hold true. There's a tremendous amount of interest in serving children better in more equitable environments, and there's a notion that we can do it more cost-effectively. The more cost-effectively piece gained a lot of attention in the General Assembly because of the prospects for saving money. That theme will not diminish, but if we change the funding system, to put it in the most basic terms, and we don't change the delivery system to conform to the funding system, then we're going to be, have more money to spend than we're currently, we will be spending more money because we haven't changed the delivery system. But the most important piece of that law from the perspective of my association is that we are trying to serve children better, more equitably, and in a lot of different So to come all the way back, when we were looking at the implementation of the law and the rulemaking process and how we, we were concerned that the rules might not conform to all the options and opportunities that were afforded us under federal law, and that was really the basis for that, for that work, I would say. Others may have a different opinion, but.
It's like your ten pillars may be contradictory when you're talking about Act 173, census base, you put out the money, the local district lives with it, life goes on. What's the problem?
Well, the problem is if you, if you define how that money can be used, in our opinion, too narrowly, and we think the Federal Education Group's report supports that, then you don't have the latitude to local district to really do the things that you want to do. And a concrete example would be, right now, I'm using special ed reimbursement as a principal or as a superintendent to provide services, but I really could be using that block census money to hire two, three more reading teachers so that I really help kids learn early on and give them the support they need early on. And under the reimbursement model, there's not the flexibility to do those types of things unless it comes from the local side of the budget. Another thing that came up in the legislature is that over the last half decade, maybe even decade, the portion of money that's being spent on special education within the local budget keeps increasing. And when that occurs, obviously hurts other programs as well. This gives principals and special ed directors, people on the ground working on a day-to-day basis with students, opportunity to use resources better.
Right. Yeah, and I would just add that, you know, our support around Act 173 was really the change in practice. So as you know, it was the UVM study, but it was also the District Management Group report, which, which really changes the culture and practice in schools. And so we feel like it's critical that we have that practice change as well, or it's just less money for special ed, which is.
But if you're capped on your amount of money that you're getting, wouldn't that put natural limits on what you could spend and force the local districts to be more economical?
No.
I don't think so either.
I mean theoretically, yes. I'm going to go back to something else that Secretary French said. He talked about a system and evolution. So people have heard me say, and again, I'm speaking only for myself, that it would have been great to implement Act 46 10 years ago and then watch the other systems changes unfold in response to more sensible systems, as it were. We stacked up many significant policy initiatives, one on top of the other, on the heels or concurrent with Act 46. So to expect that a change in the availability of resources would necessarily lead to a change in practice would be equivalent, in my mind, to taking a, you know, pretty sophisticated text and providing it to a group of people who were all, in all different phases of the learning to read process. We're trying to communicate to people, and this is why there's such interest on the part of all of our organizations, that the practice change is going to need to be well-informed and be pervasive through the entire system. So when we engage with conversations about the professional learning plan that's being developed at the Agency of Education, what we're paying attention to is, will that professional learning plan lead to instructional aides, teachers, principals, parents, advocates, superintendents, special ed directors, families, in terms of what the change means? So it's a, this is a, this is a, this is a more complicated endeavor than Act 46. Because Act 46 talked about the governance structures, and the implementation of Act 46 relied on information and preparation and training, but you were dealing with a relatively small segment, important but small segment of the delivery system. This law touches the entire delivery system, and, you know, we're trying to get it right.
And I think the way that we, and the Federal Education Group report is useful in helping us better unpack this conversation, because what it illustrates to me at least, is that the way we have defined special education and the way we have made certain expenses eligible for reimbursement has made, I think, what was a very well-intended approach. And quite frankly, groundbreaking and revolutionary at the time, some of these rules were put in place in terms of Vermont wanting to be as inclusive an environment as possible for students who had special needs, has evolved into special ed being this sort of an additive program and not something that can be delivered by a general ed teacher in a classroom by adapting the way he or she delivers instruction to students. And so if we don't reconcile the way we've always done things and a sort of a narrow definition of what is a special education service, which is connected to the services that are identified in an IEP and the services that are eligible for reimbursement, if we don't start to expand that definition to really reflect, I think, what federal law intends and what our students need, which is to have instruction tailored to meet their specific needs, not by supported by a para educator who may or may not have expertise in literacy instruction, which the child really needs, but by that classroom teacher who needs more support and professional learning in order to understand how to, how to teach a child or work with a child who's dyslexic, for example, which was an example in the report itself, then we are going to be in an environment where folks are, continue to be obligated to have one-on-ones and these additive services with potentially fewer resources to do it. That's an outcome we are trying very hard to avoid. We need, so there's a lot of interconnected pieces. The rules are a big piece of that, and it's important that we lay that foundation well so that we don't end up in a situation where districts are continued to be obligated to provide this, this set of discrete services that we're, we now know based on the analysis by District Managing Group, is actually not serving students well, is costly. We can reuse those funds still to meet the needs of students, just do it in a different way, in a more effective way.
I'd like to inquire of Mr. Van to hear about how this, how this looks to the people on the ground.
Right. The folks with whom I've spoken and my members are concerned about, one of the chief concerns they've had with special ed over the years is paperwork. And the promise, if you will, as Jeff alluded to, of Act 173 was that there would be greater flexibility, that there would be, as Nicole just pointed out, a better delivery system. So I think that's, that's a key component to this. I too was hardened by the Secretary's and the agency's open-mindedness to the Federal Education Group's letter, and I'm looking forward to that. We all now have, when Act 173 was passed, for purposes of the State Board of Education, you have to pass rules, these are your rules to pass. They gave you, gave us a little bit of a delay, and we need to, we decided collectively, I think, that we needed to take advantage of that delay, that time, get a good expert report, which we think we have at least got, got going on this, and gives you and us collectively a time, some time in which to develop rules that make sense for the folks on the ground and make sense for folks in the office to run these programs and do them well and provide greater services to all kids, whether they've been identified or not. And that was one of the promises that my members are saying. They see kids who are heading down a path, if we can work with them a little bit earlier, perhaps we can stave off being identified and put on an IEP. So that's the promise, the hope. And I think the Federal Education Group's letter expands the definition, or suggests we expand, expand the definition of special ed services. And hopefully we can all tie that together in a way that makes sense so that when we come back to you with rules, we collectively agree on them and it's, it's an easier process for you to improve them.
I just want to observe that they're saying the devil is in the details.
Absolutely.
And, and for example, what you're talking about, flexibility, has to find a way of meshing with what the Secretary has to talk about, which is accountability, traceability, absorbability, documentation, and sort of where's the, where's the balance? And that's the devil in the details that you all need to figure out, obviously. And yes, we don't have the expertise to formulate policy. I think it will be our duty as a board to listen thoughtfully to different perspectives, the perspectives of the agency, the perspectives of the practitioners and specialists, and we hope, encourage you to find the middle ground that works, without losing the thrust of what the legislature had in mind, find the middle ground that accomplishes, in fact, what the legislature had in mind.
Absolutely.
Peter?
Jeff mentioned it'd be best if 46 could have preceded all of this. We tried 10 years ago, it didn't work, and it was only by imposition that it, that it happened. This, we're doing the same thing with what we're dealing with right now with special ed. It's, for having been on school boards for many years, special ed was the third rail as a board member, you really couldn't do much about it. I mean, and, and I think that's, that's kind of where we're at. We've gotten to the point where now, by legislative decree, we've got to deal with it. And, and, you know, I, I do hope that everything works out, because it is a serious issue in terms of cost and, and not being willing to address or attend to the issues at hand at the governance level, at the local governance level. And it's, it's, I don't know if anybody else has been on board members, on school boards, but it's really, you don't really have much, much say about it.
Well, because IEP teams make a lot of these determinations, right? And so it's not a school board's role to second-guess the determinations of the IEP team. I think it's why it's really important that we have families at the table and they understand how, well, perhaps historically, these services that have been laid out in an IEP or one-on-one time or pull-out time have, you know, been thought to, you know, meet this child's needs. In fact, we think there's a better way. Families are going to need to have confidence that by letting go of a service that has been in their child's IEP, they're actually going to get a better outcome for their, their child. Well, I think it's really important why the advisory group is so key, because we have representatives of families, we have representatives of the, it's not just our associations that are the stakeholders in this. It's a much bigger conversation outside of schools, because ultimately, the IEP team is going to need to, to start to talk about how IEPs look different to reflect the classroom-based instruction that students are going to be getting, receiving.
Thank you. Kim, you had a comment, a question?
Just in how many of that is a port and the recommendations to redefine special education would lie with whose responsibility or authority?
I think, you know, there, firstly, I think they point to our statutory definition. So there's some statutory language. My interpretations, they would suggest perhaps there's a construct. And a lot of the commentary in the report, my analysis of it is that it wasn't directed necessarily at our new rules, it was at our current rules which were established in 2013 and that statutory framework. So I think possibly, where I think, just at a general level, explain the trajectory of the work, we're heading, as I said, there's a meeting tomorrow, we're digging into that guidance level to get down into the devil, the details, to start to frame that out a little bit, so then we can go back and look at perhaps changes to draft rules or changes then ultimately to statute. We know through, I think predictably with 173, there's going to be an annual process where we're going to go back to the legislature and request or suggest modifications, the advisory group will do that. So I think it'll be an iterative process in that regard. But I think they're pointing to our statutory construct of how we define special education, to what extent that varies or doesn't, or discourages what we need to enact under Act 173, but there's certainly information relative to our regular. But there's certainly information relative to our regulatory and guidance as well.
Is there a reason why we would not want to utilize the full extent of federal opportunity in our definitions?
I interpret that, your question to me, like the flexibility?
Right.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's important that I heard strongly from the FEG folks on both occasions I interacted with them, where as a caveat, when they introduced this work, they say, "We do not understand or didn't study Vermont's delivery system." You know, so the role of the agency is often to take federal regulation and figure then on what, you know, federal law and figure out what regulations are going to be necessary to ensure that it's enacted. So one of my hypotheses as someone who lived under our old regulations with all the paperwork and so forth is that we had that system because of the decentralized nature of our delivery system. So there, you know, with Act one fifty-six in particular, we now have centralized special education at the SE level. Many of the issues Nicole mentioned in terms of dealing with IEPs, that process in itself by centralizing special education, systems start to take on those issues and you start to see better approaches to how IEPs are. Meaning that previously in a decentralized system, how a student with a learning disability in one district versus another, they might have radically different services provided in their IEPs. So when you create a system, they tend to come together around what should be, let's say, a standard IEP for, you know, a simple learning-disabled IEP kind of construct. So those things are happening anyway, which is good news. But I think part of what we need to do is reconcile what is the structure of our delivery system. So the FEG group would say, and had said repeatedly, "You could have greater flexibility as long as you have quote-unquote a disciplined approach to coding costs at the local level." We do not have a disciplined approach to coding costs in Act. In fact, we are now embarking on that work as well through our rolling out of the SSDDMS system, that centralized business management system. So I think, you know, what I've learned through this process is we have to create a Vermont solution. There are other states, we found pretty quickly, the FEG group spawned opportunity for us to connect with other states in the country. The federal government is largely saying, "There's greater flexibility available to the states, both under ESSA and special ed law. Go ahead and figure it out." But there's no specificity on how you do that. So we have to create a Vermont solution that's responsive to an understanding of where our school districts will be as a result of Act forty-six and Act fifty-six, which is they're in a much better place to act as systems. We will have more ability to document a disciplined approach to coding, as the FEG group would suggest. So I think there is an opportunity for us to embark on a design that will allow greater flexibility to achieve those policy goals. But we're going to have to create it and design it and it's going to be a problem-solving process. We've already seen. I don't know if I answered your question, I just kind of got a...
I just view those flexibilities to be exactly what I understood of Act one seventy-three and the tension and implementation to utilize the resources in a way that helps head off the largest problems potentially and improve the system for all. And so I just would like us to bear in mind to the extent there's flexibilities afforded under the federal law, figuring out the mechanics of how we document or otherwise in our now-unified systems, I think, is an important mechanical thing to solve versus letting that limit what we're able to do with the resources. Because that was truly what I understood to be the promise of one seventy-three.
Yes, I think, you know, just kind of, just to reiterate where we are, we were down to that level of having to work, collaborating with folks to get into the mechanics to then sort of step back and admire the larger construct. If we find through that exercise that there are statutory changes or regulatory changes that need to be made in our draft rules or otherwise, we'll do that or we'll promote that. But I think we all have to get to that place where we understand. And I think that was some of the criticism of our rulemaking process earlier is that we were saying, "We'll take care of this in guidance, but we're unable to really describe what was in that guidance." And so people were like, "Well, until we see that, we really don't have a full picture of what you're envisioning." So we've made some progress on that, but this report has been very helpful now.
Thank you. Jenny.
Oh, I had thought that it went three different ways now, but it's kind of coming back to what Nicole was saying around having families, being open to exploring other options. I think it's the same for everybody within that school system, right? It's, and I think on the ground, we have special educators and they're professionals and classroom teachers and administrators who are doing the best that they can with what they know how to do. And we're asking them to think differently. And I think thinking differently around how to provide the same service in different capacities is going to take a lot of work. So I think the workflow between like what the rules look like and what implementation looks like, as we saw with the PLP this morning, there's gap, right?
Bill.
Couple of disparate points. Eventually this has to come back to the State Board of Education for the rules. And we're going to have to come to some kind of agreement on this before the day's over. In terms of the data system and inability to collect this stuff, I think that's a national problem as much as it is a Vermont problem. Anybody who's played with the NCES statistical system will know that. And so I think there's a lot of room there. And I ask myself, what's California doing, which is a little bit larger than us? Who's implemented such a system and what have we learned from them? And the third point, which is really a question to you folks, is you've talked about the ten initiatives that are going on now and which we've talked about earlier today. And this comes in in what appears to be a restrictive way. And I'm just saying, how do we fit all these pieces together? And how would you do that in the field, given the lack of professional development time?
You know, what our analysis is, and that's, you know, our responsibility to sort of also take a pulse on where the field is at, which I've already iterated, that's a key part of our variable, our consideration, as Jeff iterated. Our conclusion is that one seventy-three is the overarching frame by which all those other things can emerge. It is the single biggest system lever we have available to us right now to advance the work that's already been put in place to allow districts to continue to act more as systems. And it's through enabling that that we'll better achieve our goals of equity and quality for kids. So one seventy-three isn't necessarily an add-on per se, it's the larger framing document through which we can advance some of the other goals. That's our conclusion.
I appreciate the agency's document coming out earlier this week to sort of connect a lot of the pieces because I think that is, that's an important starting point. I think the remaining question for me and to pick up on Jenna's point is the professional learning strategy is still, I think, too sort of left to the districts to sort of manage and figure out on their own. And so we're really going to be, continue to look to the agency to provide that, that leadership of the law, contemplate resources being spent on professional learning. We've fought pretty strongly or articulated pretty strongly through the advisory group that a targeted approach to professional learning is really important. So based on the agency's assessment of where folks are with respect to the pieces that need to be in place in order for Act one seventy-three, you know, the activities envisioned by Act one seventy-three to really come to fruition, you know, which places are at the greatest risk of, you know, not even having centralized special ed, for example? Or, you know, the systems just don't exist. We're targeting the professional learning towards those systems because in the absence of that, it tends to be districts that are already pretty far along the path, drawing down more professional learning, designing their own plan, and our fear is that the equity gap just gets bigger between the systems that are building systems and the ones that are still struggling to come together. So we're going to continue to push, I think, on that front as well, as the rules.
Peter, you had a comment?
Flexibility and then the divide between special and regular ed, is that, can that be addressed in terms of blending and being able to best address the students' needs rather than just the specialized?
Yeah, that's a fundamental construct of one seventy-three and there's this...
I know. That's the key question. And we think, I mean, we think that with the work the state's done on MTSS, using a multi-tiered system to support and having some flexibility at the local level and how you do the funding, how you allocate staff, that will allow us to provide better resources for all the kids.
But hasn't it been just by the accounting and how do you, you know, channel the money from both, you know?
Yeah, that's essentially the question.
Right, that is essentially the question.
And do we have that flexibility?
We do. It's a question of how we enact it in regulation and guidance, so...
We think we should have that.
Yeah, we have, you know, essentially where one seventy-three emerges, you know, from a narrative is that what was best practice, what has been longstanding best practice, as Jay mentioned, MTSS, the funding system was found to be counterproductive to implementing best practice. You know, it was providing the wrong incentive, so we have to reconcile that.
That's the work.
That's the work.
And the District Management Group findings.
But you can do that in terms of accounting and what the feds will let you do in terms of being able to co-mingle or...
We will, we are going to endeavor to find a way to do that, yes.
Great. So it sounds like we have a commitment that we all want to do the same thing, so hopefully we can make it work.
So, I'm not going to pass up my opportunity to be able to do that, but try.
Yeah, we know. Nicole and I love that.
So, when you listen to, so here's where I want to go. This is very, it's complicated and it requires differentiation. The systems, if you take a look at school systems in Vermont, and Nicole alluded to this and so did Dan, some are better equipped. We've got, if I had fifty-three superintendents with me right now and raised the prospect for one seventy-three, there are some systems that are very far ahead in terms of their thinking and already preparing to make adjustments in order to implement one seventy-three. There are others who are not. So we need a professional learning plan originating from the Agency of Education, and they put out that document this week, which establishes the overall construct for what it is we're trying to accomplish with the law, excuse me, and how it matches up with other laws, practices and policies we have in place right now. One of the reasons that this group looks like this is because I know that to implement Act one seventy-three effectively, superintendents need to understand not only what it is, but what they as the superintendent need to do. Same thing with the principal, same thing with the special ed administrator, same thing with the teacher. We talked about school boards not being involved in the process. Well, when you make a shift in terms of how you apply your resources from individual aides and special classes to more tier-one instruction, for example, that is the role of the school board. So the school boards have an important piece of this too. Here's the redundant part. We cannot understate the complication of the work and the magnitude of the work in terms of getting the message out to everybody because if you want an equitable delivery system, everybody's got to be on top of things. That, and my layperson's explanation is that that's the challenge and that's what we're trying to accomplish. And it starts with understanding what latitude you have in terms of the utilization of the resource.
That's the key.
And that was an important question that we turned to Federal Education Group to inform. When you consider the agency's perspective narrowly and Representative Pelts, former Representative Pelts, talked about this, there's a whole accountability issue. So the agency's got to take responsibility for making sure that one seventy-three gets implemented, but they also have to keep track of the utilization of dollars, make sure that it's a lawful utilization of dollars and the application of those laws are being tracked and are consistent with the law. So...
And I would just add, you know, we also have a leadership function. We can't continue to provide differentiation for fifty-seven different entities. You know, that is interfering with our ability to achieve quality and equity for all students. So I'd like through our leadership to get to a place where we only have to differentiate for maybe ten different types of entities, if you can follow me, on a scale, a continuum of systems functionality. So we need to get, we need to bring people along so they're acting as systems because the theory of action is as school systems, they will address issues of quality and equity within the boundaries of their authority. But we can't continue to have fifty-seven different varieties of Vermont education system being implemented across the state.
So let me ask about that. What you're saying, it seems, is that there's a different readiness or preparedness to take this up, to put it on the ground, to make these enhanced, more flexible delivery systems work?
There's more to it than that, though. I mean, it's really important that we get the more to part first because until systems know what is it they're going to be allowed to do and not do...
All right, well, let's just hypothesize that that gets clarified.
Okay.
Because I mean, if we can't do that, we're really failing. But let's assume that we really do a great job of articulating this vision and how it really, really works on, is supposed to work on the ground. What you're saying, though, is that the rate of take-up is very different, just a little bit like portfolio planning. I mean, it's the take-up rates are very different. So what are the obstacles to saturation, virtually uniformly or as close as you can in the real world? What are the obstacles to making the take-up happen everywhere and not just in some subset of the whole group?
I would just, one, I'll be highlighting and to hold Dr. Math's just earlier point about the report card. One of the elements we'll be introducing as the report card soon is staff turnover. So, you know, realistically, as a leader, I have to look at the capacity of the system and acknowledge that there's significant turnover in staff. We also have significant labor shortage and unfortunately, in the areas that we're talking about, we have significant labor issues in special education. So we're going to have to, as much as we're designing the system to fit the variability of systems, we also have to acknowledge the workforce demographic that we're facing. A lot of our systems make progress but then suffer from frequent turnover in leadership positions and in teaching positions. And many right now have labor shortages in some of the key areas that we're discussing. So that's going to be one that we're going to have to really, really take a look at statewide.
And I would say, demographics, schools look different all over the state. So a school's willingness or ability to embrace delivery with a small percentage of students with special ed needs is going to look different than a school that has thirty percent of their population that needs services.
Okay, what about leadership? My instinct always is to look at the leadership.
Yeah, and that's a fair point. But we also have turnover in leadership. And typically where we have the turnover in leadership are the places that Dan is talking about where we have the turnover in teachers. You know, and it's not always because the system's dysfunctional. Sometimes it's because the system can't pay as much as the system next door. I mean, we have some real equity issues in this state in terms of leadership and quality of teachers that some systems can hire compared to others just for financial reasons.
So does anybody have any ideas for mechanisms that can be either added by statute or otherwise that will sort of provide compensatory support, if you will, or facilitation for those districts that are less likely to get there on the same schedule as others? Is that part of your thinking or are we just going to roll this out and...
Well, we had that conversation...
That's a key, Nicole highlighted. I think we have a responsibility to do that differentiation through the system. I'm just articulating an angle. Just to be clear, I wasn't talking about consolidation. I was just talking about reducing the variability of systems quality across the state so that we don't have people all over the map. But I think our, my goal as we get into the work plan, and the advisory group hasn't met, I think we're meeting mid-September, is that we would always be in a position on an annual basis by December to understand what our recommendations would be to the General Assembly for further statutory revisions in this area. This is going to be a multi-year process. So my hope is that we, as we dig into this specific issue and come back to the regulation level, we'll have, always by around December, have an understanding of where we might need to make some tweaks, either through statute or regulation to better implement the law. And that will be hopefully responsive to the needs of districts as well.
So that's kind of, I guess what I'm hearing is though that the driving change where there's resistance or obstacles is going to happen from the way the agency focuses and rolls out its efforts. I'm wondering if there aren't other institutional things that could be done in terms of financial incentives or that would, just as we, just as the legislature did with Act forty-six. It sort of put some incentives in place that, well, not everybody took advantage of them, of course. I guess I'm just worried about that we get this working well in two-thirds of the school districts and not very well at all in a third of them, and that really won't be much of a success.
It's a good point. I think, you know, I think of looking back on forty-six, I mean, it's many of these groups in front of you, if it wasn't for them pulling together and providing resources with Visba that, you know, we wouldn't have had the support to do forty-six either. So there's going to be, there's going to have to be that assessment at some point. But I think the first thing we can do is just sort of frame this out as the major policy initiative that's going to... initiative that's going to align the system sooner rather than later with our goals for students. So it's, it's a huge opportunity for the system.
And it's not only, we've talked a lot about the rules, but the other component of the advisory group that we discussed was the professional development, and Nicole mentioned it and alluded to it. It's a critical component to my members. They've got to be trained and trained well. I think, so I think that my members need that training, need to do it well for them, for the directors, the principals, the superintendents. Everybody needs to get it to figure out how this new system operates. And Nicole also mentioned that some of these schools are doing it or are very close to doing it already, if you will, or they're, they're ready to go. Those are the ones that we're maybe not concerned about, it's the thirds, as you alluded to, that, that may not get there. We need to give them extra TLC, and the agency's got, you know, we hope the agency will have the resources with which to give the good professional element to them in particular, and we focus on those. I think that's an aim.
And we also have oversight of their grants, you know, sort of federal grants are an important resource, so we, you know, districts that are on a higher tier of technical assistance and oversight, we insist essentially that they focus their investments to address this issue as it emerges as a priority. So those hundreds of thousands of dollars that are available to local districts need to be focused on the issue.
Peter.
Can I just quickly comment? We keep on talking about the incentives. The incentives were, were not just incentives, they were a way to get to a, a single tax rate after five years, and you had to, that was one of the purposes of the way we constructed the incentives, is that there were, everybody didn't get the same amount, depending on where you came in on this, and after five years, you, you had the same tax rate. I don't know if there's something similar here in, in the spending, but I just want to point that out. It wasn't just, it wasn't just a purpose to incentivize, it was really a way to, to come out with equal, equal, you know, costs or, or tax, tax rate at a period of time.
I'd like to just step into a little hornet's nest. I, I sense from reading some of the advisory group's notes and communications that there's a tension about the differentiation between rules and guidance. I, I got the sense that there's an appetite, or there's an appetite for, or there's a preference, there's a concern among some of the stakeholders that if things are left to guidance, that they may not have a voice in shaping that, whereas they are reasonably optimistic that they have a voice in shaping rules. I frankly don't understand the sort of differentiation between when is something appropriate for rules and when is it appropriate for guidance. Maybe you could speak to that. And then to you all, is that a concern, that, that this whole thing gets fleshed out in rules so that you know the, the rules of engagement, as it were, as opposed to some rules and a lot of guidance later?
Yeah, I would just, just as a, just a general construct, I mean, one, one lens that sort of is useful, I think, in looking at that is the, where the flexibility needs to be. So you, you know, statute is a harder process to modify, regulation also, you know, a little easier to modify than statute, but still difficult. And then guidance should be something that's a little more fluid, that I could change. So, for instance, we talked about the memos, that was guidance I produced to the field. I was able to pivot immediately and create new guidance.
Right.
Immediately, a couple of months. But still, that would be quicker than this body modifying rules.
Right.
So when we, if we do this correctly, I don't say correctly, but where we envision the guidance, particularly in the mechanics, the devil in the details, getting down to the mechanical, we'd certainly involve people in that, but we also need to pivot on those issues as we confront other ones. And the other issue is that the guidance will be responsive to the differences among districts, but also based on the tools we have available. You know, if we, if we were to, you know, if we were successful in getting the SSDDMS system implemented and are able to envision documenting costs in that system more transparently from the state end, then that's, that's a tool that we don't really have on our, in our toolbox right now, is we, we have to design perhaps more intrusive regulation to ensure we have a disciplined approach to documenting costs, because people have all kinds of different accounting systems. If we get to a place where there's one system, and as envisioned in the SSDDMS, we don't even do vertical reporting with that system, the state basically does an extraction out of the same system, then we have a whole different tool available, and maybe the regulations then start to look a lot different, because we can automatically ensure that disciplined approach to coding on the backend. So I think it's, it's, part of it is just that flexibility piece.
Do you have any comments on this question?
I do have a concern with the, the rules versus guidance. So I, I think the analysis actually is whether guidance or rules, if they are generally applicable to all schools, and in fact, they have to go through the rulemaking process, and I think the Vermont Supreme Court has said that. So I think that the department, it's not a question of whether the agency can, or you can more flexibly or, or more quickly pivot determines whether it's a rule or guidance. That's, that's not the analysis. Whether they're applicable to everybody, then in fact, they go through, they should go through the rulemaking process. So I think that's, we do have concerns, we do have concerns about whether the guidelines, and I don't know what they are, so I can't speak to them, but as a general matter, I had this conversation many years ago with the agency when they were rolling out their rules around No Child Left Behind and guidance thereof, and so that was a, so it's a, it's always a concern when you put too much in guidelines and not enough in rules.
Yeah, so.
But it's a general concern, you know, that I have generally with the concept of state government, and I've done it myself, having worked for state government years ago. You know, it's a tendency to want to put things in guidelines that are easier, more easily changed, and that may not be the test.
I suppose one strategy might be to write rules that set the boundaries for guidelines, as it were, so that you kind of know what the range of possibilities is as defined by rule, but the specifics get determined within the advisories or the guidance, just so that people know what the extremes of the possibilities are. It's, the more certainty that can be created for the districts, obviously, the better.
And I think this, to Jeff's point, this, this, this topic is going to test that, because this is a highly technical policy area, you know, probably the most technical one we have, so we're, we're going to have to really work hard at finding where the right categories of things belong, because it's, it's highly technical, and the stakes are pretty high, both from a legal standpoint and a financial standpoint.
Yes, and Kim, and Bill?
I think that we had indicated as a body that we, we were certainly putting the rulemaking process on hold, that we were waiting for additional feedback from the advisory group, that we wouldn't be taking anything up until we saw the guidelines, so that this process, I am appreciating Jeff's comment and understanding the confines of what's the rule and what's, this is my first round on this rodeo through the rulemaking process, so I'm learning with all of this. But I, I think that while the guidelines would maybe create those boundaries, I think we, it's important for the field to have clarity around how it would be implemented, and until knowing what those guidelines or how these rules are expected to be implemented are soon to be expected, that we would begin on taking comment on rules.
Right, yeah, and that's our.
I think we had talked about that.
Yeah, that's our suggestion now, is that we, we have to delve into the mechanics of the guidance to then come back and have a conversation about what the rules should be, vis a vis the guidance.
As a point of process, I did want to flag for, for the State Board that the former Chair of the State Board attended the last advisory group meeting and shared the schedule, the proposed schedule that you all had approved at your last meeting, and there was a request that we delay the joint meeting at least until November, if not December. I don't, I want to make sure that that message got conveyed back, because the advisory group felt like that was too tight of a turnaround for, if, if the expectation is the advisory group will develop its own language, which seemed to be the request from the Chair, we're certainly hoping that we can come to alignment with the agency, but in, in the absence of alignment, we're supposed to, the advisory group is supposed to present language to the State Board, that October was too tight, and so the former Chair had agreed, at least in discussion with the advisory group, to, to November.
Or December.
Or December, November being the earliest time that that would come back.
Because we don't meet again until September.
That message did not get lost in the leadership transition.
Thank you. I'm meeting with Megan Roy after this meeting, and she can affirm that for me.
Great.
Somewhere, this is, I hope, related to the whole sequencing of the rule, the rule-making process. Somewhere in the notes, I've scanned, I think minutes of advisory group meeting, there was a statement, a thought to the effect, that said that the agency was no longer taking comments from the advisory group on its draft rules. Did I misunderstand something, or is that so?
I think that was accurate relative to where we were prior to the FEG report, in that we had, we had taken comment and presented our rules to you, so process-wise, you know, we were done necessarily, and it was in your ballpark. We are now in a different place, having to work through the guidance and so forth, so we, we agree there should be a general pause on this until we, we can work through some issues with our partners on the guidance, so you'll see that sort of schedule manifest in our work plan.
Will there be a double back, then, to the advisory group?
Yes.
Where they'll have a crack at this?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's what I've been alluding to.
And that'll be when?
Well, we're, we just produced our guidance, we have, I mean, our frame, we call our framing document, that'll be a major function or agenda item at the advisory group in mid-September. Meanwhile, we'll be working on the guidance, so I think we're scheduled to, if we continue to make progress on that, have a working draft of the guidance by the end of September. That would be our goal. So I think the advisory group in October-ish would have, we'll, we'll know where we are, whether we're in consensus or not by October, so at least we can try to work through some of those details.
I've got a question in terms of what's the legal status of the word guidance? Is that provided for in law? I can see the absolute need to be able to communicate stuff with the field.
Yeah, yeah, we put out guidance, yeah.
But are we inventing a quasi-legal document here of some sort?
It's not our intention. I mean, we, we've, we understand that broader pattern of how agencies do guidance, and there's my understanding, a general latitude giving to agencies to interpret their own guidance, but it's not our intention to, you know, create a process or something that, that avoids the, the public process, that's not what we're endeavoring to do, but it is a complex, this is a very complex technical issue. So our challenge is, you know, we are an agency that technically, under the law, could do its own rulemaking process. We've been given an advisory group that at times wants to be the State Board, in my view, and, and do rulemaking, you know, do the rules for us, so we're trying to take their feedback, but also maintain that discipline, yet then we come to you as a third entity that has to be involved in the rulemaking process, so.
Isn't the advisory committee to advance the State Board and also you?
That's correct. But they're, they're a group of diverse stakeholders as well, so it's, it's challenging. So it's, it's just, I mean, to make the observation, this is a highly technical, very important policy, I would argue, our most important one. We've also created a very complex process through which it has to navigate. I'm not advocating for simplifying that, I'm just suggesting that we, it shouldn't be surprise to any of us that there's been turbulence in the process. I think there is an opportunity, largely through the leadership of the folks in front of us today, through the FEG, to sort of get that consensus, which I think the Board would appreciate if we could do that.
Something you just said makes me wonder. It had been my understanding that the authority to adopt rules for the implementation of Act 173 lies exclusively with the State Board. Is that correct or not?
Now, there are spaces in the statute, I was referring generally, but there are specific areas in the statute that's mentioned the State Board shall develop rules, and I believe that's the case with 173. But it's a general rule, if, um, agencies have the authority to do their own rules.
But not in this case?
Not in this case, because we're still operating under this construct where the State Board, roles and responsibilities haven't been clarified.
Still operating under this construct. Yes. I sense an agenda item.
No, 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 I, I think it's one, it's working well, I just think it's just a, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, but this is a very complex work, work process, and it's, we shouldn't expect or be disheartened by running into obstacles. We need to problem or solve our way through these issues. And there, there won't be consensus on every issue.
Right.
It's not our endeavor to, to.
Well, I, I, I heard you also say, and I commend the idea, that there be accommodations reached to the extent possible between the advisory group, not stakeholders, and the agency and the language that's adopted. But the Board, I think, is perfectly prepared, if such accommodations can't be reached, and there are, there's a final draft in the agency, and there are pieces of it which are not endorsed by stakeholders, the Board, I think, is perfectly prepared to arbitrate those disputes and, and sort it out. We are not, none of us are experts, as you are, but we're a bunch of thoughtful laypeople, and we can sort out those differences, and I, it would be my goal that the Board sort out all of those differences before it begins the rule, the quote, "rulemaking process." I don't want to go forward and give, publish a document that the Board is not completely on board with and satisfied with, and has no, sees no, at that stand, point in time, sees no reason to change. Now, then we go out into a hearing process and get a few dope slaps and realize there are some needs for change, fine, we'll deal with that when the time comes. But I'm really keen on making sure that this becomes the Board's ownership before anything's filed with the Secretary of State or any of that stuff.
I'm, I'm working on a recollection of the law that I haven't checked recently, but it's my understanding that any group may at any time petition the State Board to begin a rulemaking. So although I think all of us want to come to you with as much consensus as possible, somebody can walk in at any point with their own petition and their own ideas, and you have to pay attention to them, at least to some degree.
To some degree, yeah. That's why we're really encouraging folks to be sorting out their differences together so that we, we don't want to be in the arbitration, arbitration business, because we don't bring expertise to it, but we will if we have to, you know, and that's just, the more that the advisory group can reach consensus, and I understand from the Secretary that that's a struggle sometimes, the, the, the better, as far as we're concerned. Other comments or questions, or comments from you?
I just, I'm not sure I do justice to this, but the, the, the references, the complexity, and the timing of the rulemaking process, and the influence of the rules on both practice and funding, causes me to want to raise the proposition that we need to be paying attention to timing also in a budgetary context, because to the, to the degree that the rules are going to influence what is done and how money is utilized, needs to be known to the districts on a timeline that allows them to not only understand what they're going to do, but what the, what the implications of the funding and the practice are. So I'm struggling a little bit with the concept, but it's a, it's a, it is a reference to the sort of multi-dimensional pieces of this, and how not only do we have to get the rules right, but we need to get the timing of the rules right, be, be the budgetary practice and the professional learning supports.
Right. It would be very helpful if you could give us some outlines of what that looks like.
October 15th is when the service plans.
Yeah, so we have, you know, I think that's, once again, the function of the policy work plan is just to have that well advertised, but we have, we have a need to provide guidance to folks relative to the regular process of service plan development, which is where districts basically put together their potential cost for the following year and make a budget assessment of that. But we were unable to get modifications in statute in a few areas last year, there were technical corrections to align some of these dates. So we need, we do, the issue of the project work plan of laying out deliverables is really a critical one for this initiative, because it is multi-dimensional, and we do need to align the current deliverables and requirements under the current regulations with the trajectory of how this is all going to come together, so we are attentive to that.
And I just want to, we have not touched upon.
And I just want to, we have not touched upon this and part of my frustration with the sort of needing to get these details right, which are important to get right, but we haven't had the opportunity to talk about the fact that the formula in the law was intended to be a placeholder because it does not reflect poverty. So, the UVM study recommended a factor being built into the formula for calculating the census block grant that reflected the poverty levels of the, of the districts involved. The legislature could not, did not have sufficient information at the time of pass 173. And so, what we have currently in law is a straight ADM calculation, which is very problematic for districts that have high percentages of students living in poverty or other risk factors associated with student need. And so, 173 directs some of our associations, directs actually the agency to consult with some of our associations after the waiting study is released in order to determine whether or not the formula and how the formula needs to be adjusted in order to account for those factors. I anticipate that is going to be an issue my association in particular will be focused on in the coming legislative session. So, the UVM waiting study is expected to come out in November. We're very happy that Professor Colby has made herself available to present at the VSBI DSA Annual Conference in November. I'm not sure if the report will be public at that point, but she'll at least be able to talk through the methodology and some of the areas that folks need to be paying attention to. But we, as a state, need to come back to the formula itself and talk about what the implications are of doing a straight census block grant that only takes into account the number of students you have, not the need of the poverty you're serving. I just want to flag that as that that's going to be a big issue.
So that.
Hopefully, we'll resolve these other pieces so that we can turn ourselves to the bigger equity conversation.
Do you reckon to be able to speak on that in time for the next legislative session? So, that our law could be others?
I, you know, I can't speak for the, where the association will be in October.
I think we're going to certainly try to, try to do that, yes.
So.
We don't know what the findings will be yet, but I think it's, it's, it'd be very useful if we can, once again, a December timeline in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We have, I think, to, we're going to continually be challenged to meet that, but I think it's really important with this type of an issue where we're iterating our way through it, that every December we seek to really get some coherence on what changes.
We'll see that as a milestone in your work.
Yeah, absolutely. It's already there, yeah.
Yeah. But I guess I'm thinking about what Jeff was raising as to how does this, when does this land on the districts in sufficient time for them to do the financial planning that they have to do? Not just, not just this piece, but all of it. I mean, just as you experienced your recent memorandum, coming too late for people to take account of this year, I feel like we need to understand what are some of the key deadlines for certain major pieces of this? And I, I presume you're, you're working all this out in your work plan. I presume you all are going to look at his work plan very closely and red flag where you see things arriving too late to be useful.
Well, the waiting study would be too late by definition, I would think. We're not going to make the next cycle if she's reporting in November and it gets some processing legislative action. Then we're going to miss the next fiscal year completely.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's never a perfect time to deliver these things, but in fact, what I was addressing earlier is that we have a specific need to provide some guidance this month on how districts are dealing with the immediate issue of service plan.
Right.
You know, those kinds of minor, or say, micro issues need to be addressed in consideration of the broader trajectory of this, this law.
Right, right.
But I think certainly the, the approach is going to be financially to advertise for people well in advance what, when that's going to be and how to help them transition again.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, that needs to all be put on rail, so to speak, and it's, we, we still have parts of it laying around and we need to put the whole thing together once we understand the broader scope of the world.
Okay. Other questions and comments? Imagine that. I have a.
I wasn't sure what was going to happen when you invited us up here, but I think it's been quite a useful conversation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have a, just a real layperson's question. Reading the, the FEG report, my first takeaway was, oh, you mean, we're not providing services for enough kids that the, the, the federal statute would permit us to be providing, using these funds, I guess, to put it more precisely, using these funds to serve more children? I, I struggle with that because I have the impression that Vermont ranks very high nationwide in the number of, or percentage of our students who are coded and eligible for special education funding. Number one. And number two, that we rank very high, i.e. expensive, in what we spend per student in special education services. If I'm not incorrect about that.
I think you are.
I am incorrect?
Well, there, I think the UVM study would be more useful in that regard. I think in fairness to FEG, they were just sort of providing an analysis of the legal construct. The UVM report, I believe, only identifies one area where we're, we have higher identification rates and that's emotional disturbance.
Uh-huh.
And they're looking at our regional, sort of on a New England basis, but other than that, where our numbers in terms of identification are on par with other New England states.
New England states.
Yeah, right.
But not national?
Not nationally.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think it's, but anyway, the data is not in that per se.
No, I, I saw, no, I wasn't, I'm, I'm thinking about other.
Okay.
National rankings I've seen over the years where, just as our per pupil, general education costs are among the highest in the nation, so also our special education costs, so also our coding rates. Reading this, I got the feeling like that more and more, that, that somehow this was going to drive costs higher. Cause you, do you have a, an antidote for that logic and am I wrong and I'd like to be?
So, I think, again, they were clear that they don't know exactly how it works in Vermont. They're just looking at a review of the regulations. But when you look at the District Management Group report and what it noted in terms of, so we identify a student as being eligible for special education services. And then through a blend of incentives or programmatic realities or staffing constraints, decisions get made about that student needing to, let's say, be pulled out of the classroom to receive speech, language pathology or specialized instruction on reading, which is a, and often it's occurring in a one-on-one environment. The funding constraints require that that person only deliver, in order to be reimbursed for their time, only deliver services to a child on an IEP whose IEP calls for that specific service. And then not only is the child missing the classroom instruction time, but we're creating a very costly model in terms of a professional's time being used only with one or two students at a time. Whereas if we were to more broadly define what constitutes an expense that would be eligible for special education or would, could be reflected in the child's IEP because it is specialized instruction, you know, intended to address or support a child by virtue of a preserver disability, then suddenly you can use your professionals different, in different ways. And you can say, we are meeting that child's need for specialized instruction in the classroom. And then maybe they're part of a larger group of students that has more intensive supports in addition to their reading class. But, so we're rethinking what, what specialized instruction looks like and potentially being able to serve more students through the use of our professional staff differently than we've been because we've had to keep our, both our professionals and our students in these tight boxes.
So, the, the delivery of the same, services with the same benefits.
Or more.
Can be achieved at lower cost.
For more, for more students.
Because of a different, more flexible.
Right.
Taking advantage of the capabilities of regular classroom teachers and that sort of thing.
The financial piece of that, the hope would be, I mean, I think some people tried to sell this as we're going to save a bunch of money right from the start. I think, I think that's folly thinking. I think a more likely outcome, hopeful outcome, would be that over the course of time, we're going to see less growth in special ed than we, in terms of financially than we would in a reimbursement model.
Right.
Because we're going to be able to meet the needs of kids earlier on.
Right.
And if we get the example of speech language, that's a great example. Having a speech language teacher work with five or six kids who all need to support, even if they're not all special ed kids, makes a lot more sense than having him or her working one-on-one with a kid, just financially.
Right. I mean, fundamentally, it's not about more special ed.
Right.
173, it's about that high-quality, tier-one instruction, and that's really the whole change in practice. So, more kids get more services early before they're even, you know, going to enter special ed, so that's.
But just to stay at this kind of really layperson's level, does, moving to sort of capitation funding, which is, I think, really sort of a public health term, but you are essentially funding this based upon a population and, and a comparatively simple number, does that run the risk that, and so presumably that undermines some, some unhealthy incentives that might have, might have crept into the system? But in so doing, is there any risk that, that we will, would just plain under, fail to provide funding where it is actually needed?
I think that's why there's a lot of anxiety on the side of the table because if the professional learn, if the, so, the incentive is, the amount of funds you get from the state is going to be not dependent on the number of services you provide, the number of students you have. So, there's a built-in incentive theoretically to change the practice so that you don't find yourselves in a very difficult fiscal situation.
Understood.
So, the two go, do go hand in hand in terms of practice changes, responding to funding.
Funding will sort of drive that.
Right.
Right.
But there's a real risk.
Exactly.
If we don't emphasize the professional learning, that the perception, particularly among families and, and, and teachers frankly, is that decisions are being driven by funds rather than this is good practice.
And the funding stars the services.
Correct.
And the flexibility is key even getting there.
And you have revolt.
Yeah.
Well, you're doing a crummy job for certain kids.
Right.
Right, for sure.
Which is the greatest concern.
Right.
So, this is a real high-wire act, isn't it?
Yes.
Absolutely.
The stakes are very, very high.
Yeah.
You had asked earlier what some of the obstacles were, competing priorities. I mean, we, we, every year ask for simplicity in the legislative process, which I know is absurd for us to ask. But, but, you know, we, we, you, when you think about the comments about capacity of systems, if a new law of some, measurable scope and scale gets implemented, it, it pulls resources away from this, this work right here. And we talk with legislators about it. I know that the, the education committees are fully aware of that, but the legislature is in business to pass laws. And education is always a major area of interest. So, competing priorities, disruption, some of the challenges that we've had with the AOE over the last year, and we're not going to talk about the June 6th and June 7, 7 memo, but we opened that way, was it's, how do we, as a group of people who are all interested in improving the delivery of education for kids and for communities and for the state overall, work better together to make sure that we are able to stay on point with regard to what the real important issues are? And sometimes the distractions are inadvertent. Probably most of the time they are. But, you know, I, I, I am, I have the benefit of working with superintendents and depending on how you count, which is reflective of public policy in this day, is either 53 or 56, depending on how you count, because we've got three tech center districts, for example. And I understand that when something happens that requires the school system to act, it plays out differently in each of those systems. So, when you think about improving things overall for all kids in a manner which relies on systems, then it's really important to try to minimize distractions and keep people focused on this most, the, the most important work. And what we're confronted by in Vermont this, at this particular point, 2019, is that we have a lot of, a tremendous amount of work, all of which is deemed as important.
Right, right, right. Sabina, you had it coming.
Yeah, so, you remember saying something about creating, like, teaching teachers how to help students with special needs in the classroom? And so, something that kind of struck me is, is there like some, when you get that one-on-one learning for the student, how does that negatively impact them that they're not getting that in the classroom from the teacher? Because it would seem almost that you take them out of the chaotic, you know, classroom situation and put them here where they can get this support that they need in order to be the best student that they can be? And how would putting them back into the classroom and having the teacher who's, has to teach 20 kids as well as them and then giving them this special support, I feel like that would almost hinder not only the student, because they can't get as much support, but it would also hinder the students who don't have special needs or, and they can't get as much support from the teacher because the teacher has to support the student.
So, that's a great question. We're not.
Yeah, so, I'll start with that. Let's hope you can do that. I'll start all things down. As a, as a principal for a long time, a superintendent for a long time, and before that a classroom teacher, one of the things that happens right now in the current system we have is that a student who really needs support, oftentimes, it's different everywhere, may be removed from the classroom, not because of a behavioral problem or anything like that, but because they need more support. And what happens is they're given that support by the least qualified people. You'd be hiring a par educator who maybe has a high school degree, doesn't have any real instructional ability, and that person's giving the instruction to the kid. So, the kid, what happens is in that system, the gap just keeps getting further and further, the kid gets further and further behind. So, in a model where you can, where you can use your funding a little bit more effectively, say you need to have three reading groups in your third-grade classroom. And really, elementars where this is really important oftentimes. So, in an elementary classroom, you could have two other teachers that are in that classroom also teaching reading. And the best teacher of the three could be working with the kids who need the most support. It might not necessarily be the third-grade teacher during reading time. It might be some reading specialist who does this in four or five different classes. And instead of her only being able to work with special ed kids, if she was a special education teacher, she would have the flexibility to work with whatever kids needed it the most. That's kind of the, the thought process behind this.
Right.
Okay? Great, great question.
Right, and for kids being, with special education being in the least restrictive environment, so we really do want them to be in the classroom because, again, if they're pulled out.
If that's appropriate. Sometimes the most appropriate is to be out of the classroom.
Which it could be.
With somebody else because of behavior, whatever.
Right.
And Sabina's question, which is, was a great question, is probably the question on the minds of a lot of parents.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
For sure, for sure.
Sabina, to add too, there's also the, the concept of stigma. Kids being pulled out and being stigmatized as, as different, needing special attention or whatever. So, this, this is one way to address that. But also, the teachers with whom I've chatted and conversed about this is, they know, particularly the elementary schools, kids who are not yet identified.
Right.
Who are heading down that path. And they could actually, as Jay alluded to, perhaps give them more attention, the kids who are not yet identified, with the kids who are identified on special IEPs and work with those kids at a higher level with the classroom teacher. And while she is instructing other kids to do, who are able to work on their own, perhaps. So, it's, it's a concept of, the law talks about block grants, block funding, you know, just dollars as per capita, but it also allows teachers, the hope is that it will allow teachers to work with kids who are not yet identified.
Right.
So, that they could then be avoided from being identified.
Yes, right.
So, that's, it's a great question and it's, it's really at the core of this law.
Right, that's the promise of.
Which is the virtue of co-teaching, I mean, that's.
There are already models that are working.
Yes, sort of. I mean, there's not a lot of research that supports the effect of co-teaching the way that we implement it in Vermont thus far.
Aren't you talking about that, when if you have different teachers in the same place?
Well, there's a legal term for co-teaching, which means, right now, it means a special educator and a classroom teacher are teaching a class together, but doesn't have anything to do with necessarily the skill set of those people that are, that are providing it. So, I would make the argument that under, under a block model like we're going to, if we could, if I had a fourth-grade teacher who just could knock fractions out of the park and I have a big school with four fourth grades, that teacher might be teaching fractions to every single kid, you know? If that, if that was something that was deemed as a real, real important concept.
It's too bad Krista's not here because she, I think South Burlington High was, you know, was early in applying this.
Yes, yes.
And I think effectively.
Yes, that's very true.
Well, and I think to circle back to the point the secretary made earlier, it's why a barrier in some places will be staff turnover and, and frankly, the ability to fill positions period. to fill positions period. So this law is, in many ways, very theoretical, and will work well to the extent you have a team of experts that you can, you know, use differently than you have. If you're struggling to keep a third grade teacher in-house period, and every year, every two years, you've got someone brand new.
Very hard.
That's a very different environment than folks that have had, have more robust teams of folks that have been on the ground for a while.
I think we've spoke to a lot of technical pieces of, you know, professional development and merging a special ed and regular ed system. But I think at the core of it all is culture too, right? And like, that goes to the turnover, right? So it's culture, it's mindset, it's believing that schools have one system, right? So there's a whole belief system that needs to shift for some schools. And some schools already have that in place, and some schools don't. But that's really at the core of, I think, this, this work.
Culture is hard to change.
It is.
Absolutely.
I think to be curious about incentives that fall outside of this, but rather with our higher ed and students pursuing special ed and education degrees and payback of loans and, you know, the bigger picture that gets qualified resources to the areas that need it, and that's outside of our domain. But I can't help but be curious about what other levers can help resource these districts to do this work. Just pondering.
Yeah, that, it feels to me that this business of deep saturation, widespread saturation of what we're trying to do here, is really, really, in the end, central. That we can, if we don't succeed at that, then, then, yeah, we have three fifths of our districts doing, doing what was visualized, and one fifth kinda, and one fifth hardly at all. And that just has, it's such a problematic prospect for me. First of all, in terms of equity for children. I mean, just, and then, and then just as the principle of it. I mean, if you, if you look at any, any data point for the state, you know, how well are we doing in teaching financial management? There's this wide distribution of, you know, in three fifths of the districts, we're doing quite a good job, and in one fifth, we're doing a SOZA job, and in one fifth, we're doing a crummy job. And the, the challenge always is, how do we get everybody up into the middle so that, I mean, how do you push up your numbers? You attack where the weaknesses are. And so I guess what I'm sort of thinking about this is, how are we going to make this implementation and rollout be truly as close to universal as possible? And we need to be, I think, focusing and attacking on the, where the weaknesses are, whether they're cultural or, or labor market forces, whatever they are. That it, it's so easy to just get two-thirds of it right. And that, I think, will be a disappointment on several points. The most important of which is the question of equitable opportunity for children. Shouldn't be an accident where there were.
You're all here, you have a reason, you want to do well. I like to say, just in the course of this meeting, it sounds like we went from, earlier you said a third weren't doing well, now we're up to one-fifth aren't doing well.
There you go, already.
Let's keep talking a little bit. But speaking of talking, I think this has been quite a wonderful conversation. At least that's for me.
Thank you so much again.
Very little about all this. I thank the board members who've contributed and the good questions. Really thank you for making so much of your time available and your background and expertise. We're going to miss you, aren't we?
We called the quarter around two prospects.
Well, young woman moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was very good.
Thanks.
So thank you, board. That was a very good conversation. We're left with a little time before we go upstairs. And, and the timing is perfect on our agenda.
Excuse me.
We can divide it here, is NASB, is that right?
Yeah.
NASB membership. You received in your packet, did you?
Yeah. The invoice, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it was our budget. Oh, thank you, thank you. Yeah, there were two parts to it. There is the NASB, so this is, this is what I.
I'll look it up. It's not.
That's not too.
It's a membership for attorneys that work for state boards.
Okay, all right. Okay, good, thanks. So the question that, and it's on our agenda to discuss, but I've been advised by counsel, thank you counsel, that we could actually take action on a motion if one emerges from our discussion in this connection. And I, I might, yes, pardon me.
Hi, my name's Susan. You're not going to do the policy work with the Vermont Developmental Disabilities Council?
Yes.
We've been following the Act 173 process as closely as we can. I was hoping for an opportunity to ask this question while that SNU panel was still in trouble there.
Yes.
Just for the record, I want to say that as of right now on the Agency of Education website, there is not a next meeting of the Act 173 census group posted. Until yesterday and the day before, there was not a next meeting of the Special Education Advisory Group posted. In trying to find out information about this process, I can't even find out, I'm an attorney, attorney, I can't even find out if the comment period for the special education rules is open or not open, or who's drafting the rules and who isn't. So if you could ask the secretary that simple question.
You can ask me.
Is the, I know the process here, if you want to hear more, ask the chair that's the weakest question. So the question is, what stage is the rulemaking process at right now? When is the next meeting of the special, of the Act 173 implementation group? And if you're not part of the group that just came and presented, but you are very involved with special education, children who pursue special education services, how can you have input in this process? For me, if you're presenting to people who are currently pursuing special education services, there was a lot of testimony during the creation of Act 173, that flexibility could lead to using special ed money to buy a lesson or a new rule or something like that. And that's all important stuff. But we were told, and we believed it, oh, this will be clarified in the rulemaking process. We will know what flexibility means. We will know about means of effort. Because that nervousness to do ye students losing money, it's really real. It's really real. And I can't do my job if the agencies don't provide better access to just basic public information, like when meetings are, is the rulemaking process open? And if so, how do you comment? So those are my questions. None of that is on the website right now. It's like being posted regularly. There's not even a contact for the chair of the Act 173 advisory committee on the website. Really, I'm skilled at this, and I will tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the secretary to respond.
Yeah, the advisory group agenda is still being formulated. The chair has responsibility to sort of finalize that agenda. But then, once that's done, it will be posted to the website. The meeting will be on September 16th. So that's, once it's, the agenda's finalized, it's our practice to post it, but we don't necessarily control the agenda. We support them. They're a public body. In terms, the rulemaking, the rulemaking process, that would be for the board to respond to. But my, my understanding is the rulemaking process has not started yet. So we're, we're kind of in a process of looking at feedback from the, what was termed the FEG report. We're working on that internally. The state board was presented a draft of the rules, but the state board has not initiated, you know, that, that public process. They're waiting for us to work through the devil in the details on some of the mechanics, if you will, of how documenting costs will go forward. So I think the rulemaking process, my interpretation, is on hold until we can work that through. The advisory group will be a major part of that process. So I don't see it, my prediction, but it's not going to open anytime soon until that's resolved.
So a suggestion I made of the advisory group, I'll make it again for today, is that the Act 173 advisory group has some kind of active emailing. So if someone has a question or wants to email someone, the chair or AOE staffer, find out when the meeting is, if there's a line link. Perhaps there's nothing now. And it's, the time has moved. I mean, we all know this is on a fast-moving train. Thankfully, the legislature gave us more time, but really, it is.
May I ask, Ms. Aronoff, are you a member of either of these advisory groups?
No.
No, you're not. So, but you do attend and you've spoken to them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they.
And I would say the Special Education Advisory Committee would be well worth it. A whole, it's an agenda item of its own for this board, is a really dysfunctional body. So the Special Education Advisory Committee never even commented on Act 173, and isn't in a very good position to comment on the rulemaking process of Act 173 right now, because, as I said, it's a disfunctional group. So when, for those of us who advocate for students with disabilities, we need the venues, we need the process, we need access. And if we're not a member of the esteemed education lobby, we're really shut out of the process.
Well, I, I think it's fair to say that the, the board, when it is prepared to adopt rules, and, and I think there's sort of two stages of it. We'll be getting a proposal from the agency, which will be kind of the foundation of the document that we ultimately will adopt. At that point though, we will invite stakeholders of all stripes and colors to tell us what they don't like about it. And by the way, to tell us what would be better language, because we're not interested in complaints, we're interested in solutions. So there'll come a time when you're invited to, it'll, it'll be open. I mean, certainly the folks you saw here and the advisory groups will be, will be spending a lot of time with them. But also, it'll be open to other, perhaps narrower interests such as yours. Out of that will come a rule that the board adopts as its own. This is, this is it. At least so far as we know. And it begins the rulemaking process, which is kind of a second round of opportunity for input. It's our goal to get it about 98% right. We don't want to just sort of blunder out with something that's, that's not as close as we can make it. But we understand that we, it's not final, and we will be out looking for more feedback, and we will be open to making modifications to the rule until we get it right.
Thank you for that clarification. Because the first step of that process has already happened, the part that is the agency presenting to the board draft.
We, we haven't. We haven't received the final draft from the agency.
But we have received a draft.
We've seen drafts, what I considered working drafts. Yes, Kim?
Would I plug into the search engine on the Agency of Education, Act 173, what comes up is our item from May that is the presumptive Act 173 rulemaking timeline that suggests that we were accepting the document for holes in June. So I think we would do well to have there be some sort of update to that.
Indeed.
To delay the process, because that is all the, there are several other documents, but that is the most recent, and it includes June as our start date on that.
I'm sure the former chair was way ahead of the curve on a lot of these things, and with the transition, some of these things are, there's some slippage, and I've got a lot of catching up to do. And I, I think our September.
So maybe there's some functionality that allows us to update this without action, just to say, delay it across the top of it or something, because we've not determined what that timeline will be at this point.
Right, we have not, and we need to, we need to do that ASAP.
All we know is our backend deadlines, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Okay, just, the special ed advisory council is on the website. It's scheduled for the 19th, and there's a contact for an AOE employee, John Spinning, if you're interested.
Okay, it's, it's now 10 of, and in the interest of being prompt upstairs, I've got to postpone discussion of NASB. It's a pretty low priority right now. And a higher priority is to get upstairs for the CAF with your vocal cords ready to go, and so on. You know, you know the drill. So let's recess until, and by the way, please be back at 1 o'clock sharp. We've got some people coming from pretty far away to be present for our discussion at 1 o'clock, then again at 1:30 or 1:45. So please do your best to clear out of the cafeteria about 10 minutes of, of 1:00 and be here to start at 1:00. Thanks. Thank you all for getting back here on a timely basis. We are at Item H, the Compass School. I'd like, John O'Keefe is out feeding a meter, he'll be back shortly. I'd like to just begin by thanking and recognizing the review team that you all created at the May meeting. You'll recall, here he is. You'll recall that you directed the then-chair to create a review team to carry out the directives of newly revised, newly amended Section 166, I think it was, where the, the language of Section 166 created a, the possibility for the board to create and send a review team to visit a school in the event that the board was not confident that the school had the so-called financial capacity to accomplish its intended purposes. That was a board's finding in May, that it did not have confidence at that point. And so a review team was created, and the former chair did a lovely job, I think, of putting together a diverse review team, consisted of Sandy Wigglestone from Department of Financial Regulation, who I don't see here, Deborah Ormsby, who is here, raise your hand, Deborah, from the Agency of Education, Jennifer Ryan from the Department of Financial Regulation, also not here, I think, Mark Tashian from the Council of Independent Schools, want to raise your hand, Mark. Mark is also the headmaster of Burn Burton Academy, academy or school?
Academy.
Academy, at which we will be meeting in October. As a matter of fact, thank you for offering to host us. John O'Keefe representing the board and myself. It was a, it was a group with diverse perspectives, three people from state government agencies with kind of classic agency perspectives, and then one person representing the community of independent schools, and John and myself. And I use the word representing advisedly. We, we may have each joined and started out thinking we were representing somebody, but in the end, I think what we learned was that we were not just a collection of people with special interests that we were representing, but rather, our duty was to serve the state board by giving our best collective advice based upon what we saw and learned about the Compass School. That work we have completed in the form of a report that you have received. I sent, I sent you all two copies, the wrong copy and the right copy on Friday. And then you've, I'm sure, committed it all to memory, and you also have a copy here. I'll just be very brief in summarizing what we found, and as you, as you saw. Our first finding conclusion is that this is a really good little school. It serves youngsters in, in their area of several communities nearby Westminster, many of whom simply have not been able to thrive in public schools, and, and. whom simply have not been able to thrive in public schools, and Compass School has created a home for them that really works for virtually all of them. Very high percentage of the Compass School students graduate, much higher than statewide rates, and a very high percentage of them, ninety percent, go on to post-secondary education, and many of them do very well in that setting. So, it's a school that meets a need and does a good job of doing so. It is certainly true that it's a school that went through some significant changes in its governance, loss of some key people on its board, typically, this happens to any lay board, good people leave. We had that happen on this board very recently, and we're all the less for it. And it takes, sometimes it takes boards' time to recover from transitions like that, and that's apparently precisely what happened in this case, where the board was in sort of a absence, some key people, and kind of failed to notice that some important things, like filing their nine ninety forms with the Internal Revenue Service, had slipped through the cracks. We took that as a signal of great concern, of course, as I think we should have, and that led to our observation and visiting there that we believe they have righted their ship in terms of governance and ability to manage their financial affairs, and moreover, that the school appears to indeed have the financial capacity to meet its stated objectives. That said, the school was very candid with us in speaking about their concerns, ongoing concerns about accounts receivable. Their accounts receivable have slowly crept over the most recent years. Eighty-some-odd percent of them are over ninety days, which means they're getting harder and harder to ever collect. And it's cash drain, you know, these are mostly tuition bills that haven't been paid. And that's a concern, and the school wants to get that under control and back down. And then there's the concern that there, and there's hardly a school in Vermont that doesn't have this concern, declining enrollment. And when you're an independent school reliant upon fee-for-service, you don't get paid if you don't have students, that's a real concern. And so, while the school manages to get by financially, some years their accounts are in the negative, and some years they're in the positive, declining enrollment is a real concern. And I think it's fair to say that the Board of Directors and the Executive Director are really on to that now and are not going to stand by idly while those kind of natural external enrollment problems continue to erode the financial vigor of the school. On balance, we felt that whatever problems the school had manifested back at the first three or four months of the year have been really very aggressively addressed, and we have confidence that the school now does indeed have the financial capacity to meet its intended purposes. In fact, the board had, in its work, both in its meeting and in the former chair's letter to the school, the chair had written that the concern was that the school had not, quote, "appropriate financial policies, procedures, and practices which are necessary to prevent financial mismanagement or misuse of funds." And that was, and of course, the other concern expressed was that the school did not appear to have the financial capacity to meet its stated objectives. It is the finding and the recommendation of the review team unanimously, six very different people, six very different perspectives. It is our recommendation that the school has righted its ship, if you will, and has satisfied us that it is, that the board, this board, can and should find, and the recommendation is for you on page four, that the Compass School has, in recent months, adopted, quote, "appropriate financial policies, procedures, and practices which are necessary to prevent financial mismanagement or misuse of the public's funds," and the school is taking necessary and substantial measures to strengthen the school's, quote, "financial capacity to meet its stated objectives." We go on to suggest, so it would be our advocacy to the state board to make that finding. The team also recommends, and you can see it on page four in the middle, two conditions that the state board stipulate at the time of renewal of approval of the Compass School. The Compass School is at the moment in the works of being reviewed by the agency, and we can expect sometime in the next month or two to receive a so-called green sheet that you're all familiar with, in which the agency makes a recommendation to the board prior to the board then making, voting approval of renewal, or renewal of approval. The team is recommending that when that time comes, the board consider two conditions being placed upon that renewal, as is outlined in your, as in the report to you. Finally, the team wishes to thank this board for having confidence in it to do this work, and it also suggests that since the team has completed the work for which it was commissioned, that you might then think seriously about decommissioning the team. Yes, I guess we are, let me, before you ask a question, Bill, John O'Keefe, do you wish to add anything?
Nope. I'm good.
Okay.
At this point, but I'm sure I'll chime in later.
Okay.
I don't want to seem redundant like what was mentioned earlier.
Right. I love that comment.
Yeah. So far, it's the quote of the day.
Yes.
Definitely.
Bill, you have a comment question?
I'd like to move first the recommendation on page four, as well as the two conditions.
And your motion is to adopt those?
Yes.
I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded, that the board adopt the recommended finding, and also that the board plan at the time of reviewing the approvals to add these conditions to the approval. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Statement? Is there a discussion of the motion?
I have a question. What I find interesting is there's no mention of business manager, anybody on the operational standpoint that is overseeing the books or what's going on in the financing. It's kind of unusual to, I would think, to post that responsibility onto the board. Was there any discussion about that?
Yes. We, a sub-group of us met with the executive director, whom you've met, Rick Gordon, and his financial manager also met with us. And we, this was, I think, Deborah, you were there, plus the two folks from D F R who had drilled into the numbers pretty hard, and myself. And so, I think we came out of that with the satisfaction that they are definitely on top of, Rick is very involved, we felt, in monitoring the numbers. He drafts the budget, presents it to the board, the board reviews it, revises it, and so forth. So, I think there's a good interplay between the executive leadership of the school on the one hand and the governance leadership on the other. So, I think that was our impression. Other questions or comments? Are you ready for the question? So, the question is, shall the board adopt the recommended finding of the review team and attach the following, the listed two conditions at the time of renewing approval of the school? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous. At this point...
Jennifer?
Yes, John.
I actually have just a question for the chair, just out of curiosity. Are you going to vote on matters or only break ties?
I'll, as a rule, I'll do as the former chair did.
And only vote to break ties?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious, for her sake, reporting it, whether she put you in the ayes or nays or neither.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if anybody wants to know, the chair will disclose his or her vote, but in this case...
Okay, sorry about the disturbance.
I'd rather not be a partisan in matters, if possible, or at least cover my tracks while doing so.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, what remains then on this topic is I would like to welcome to the table the three folks from the Compass School who came up to witness this transaction and to be available to you, and you've met at least two of them before. So, do you three want to come on up and introduce yourselves, please? And we can, we have time for about a five-to-ten-minute conversation, so you're welcome to share with us whatever you wish to share, and with the understanding that your observations may provoke comments or questions from the board. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, Roxanne Blake.
Board co-chair.
Board co-chair.
And Rick Gordon, the director of school.
Randy Sol and the co-chair, Roxanne.
So, would you like to say anything in response to what you've seen?
We certainly appreciate A being approved, you know, or that report being approved, and again, thank the committee for taking the time and the work they did and the thoughtfulness. You know, I think the short piece of it, you know, was really nice to have what we did affirmed, especially these financial regulation people or, you know, who come from that area and not schools, to affirm the practices we had in place for a while, and, you know, so it's nice to see what we were doing was appreciated by others. You know, Roxanne and Randy can speak to the board, I think, this helped energize the board, I think, in, you know, expanding their efforts, you know, and to take on more responsibility. And so, I think that was an important step forward, and I think, you know, pushing us to document our practices, I don't think it asked to change a lot of practices we were using around financial management, but I think it was really helpful to document them because, obviously, personnel changes, and to have the things written down for, as they change, certainly helps our organization. So, that was, you know, useful to us. And I did talk to Dan just before this a little bit, you know, something looking forward to this, want to throw out, and I hope it doesn't like make a big, you know, to do about it, but we're in discussion with the local districts about how to serve these, whatever you want to call these kids, trauma-affected learners, that I think the legislature's been asking questions about, and, you know, have needs that may not be easy to fulfill in traditional school environments, and kids, we've served, I think, some of those type of kids for a long time, and so, trying to figure out how to work with the public districts around us and what that would mean. I don't know if that's like a state board, Agency of Education, who's going to be looking into that, but I think as a state, we need to look at how we serve these students who, you know, may not thrive in traditional settings and often are really high expense to send to certain out-of-district settings. And so, if there's ever like a pilot program or some, you know, efforts to move, to support that, you know, we can do it locally and try to figure it out, but I think it's a statewide and nationwide issue. And again, we've, I think, had a track record of working with some of these kids really successfully and want to see how we can complement what's being done currently in other educational settings to help serve all the kids in the state.
Thank you.
Randy should speak, because you didn't get to meet all these people.
Sorry, I wasn't here.
And Randy's been on the board longest, so...
Right. I've been on the board for eight years, but I do own two businesses and I travel all the time for work, so, sorry about that. I've found this process incredibly informative, actually, and it's been a wonderful spotlight on areas that needed tightening up and systems that were not in place that really we've gone through and we have invigorated the board to be much more active instead of a monitoring position. We are leading incredibly well now. We've changed systems in admissions, financial aid, we've come up with a formula for financial aid so that everything's transparent, there's committees for admission and financial aid now, and accounts receivables has gotten a huge kick in the rear in all aspects with me personally calling, texting, having conversations, and requiring people that are in the rears to have personal meetings with Rick, the business manager, before bringing their student back in to start another year when they already have a lot of debt. So, I feel excited, actually, and thank you for this opportunity. To Rick's point, it affirmed the things that we are doing really well, but at the same time, it showed the areas for work and growth.
And we've expanded the, the board has two potential members that came to our meeting last night that we're voting on, who are both retired and have, our educators have experience, deep experience in the education world, and sort of coalescing our committee structure, so combining our strategic planning and with our existing board committees to really drill down into the strategic plan areas that we're focusing on for the future, and having a real governance committee that will help train the board, get new people, train, and think about who's going to mount, rise up to be leaders and the succession issues and that kind of thing, and have a much more active board. And we did buy the very useful book that was suggested at the meeting, have several copies for sharing around, so we do, have learned a lot. Thank you. In that sense.
I think on that topic, it was John O'Keefe who made the observation to you, the importance of having people on your board who aren't, who don't have much connection to the school, who see it as an outsider would see it, and that's both educators and money and management people, and that helps you a lot. I mean, and it's normal, most boards of most organizations are, in the beginning, composed of the fellow believers, and without that, you can't survive. But then, now you're in the transition to becoming a really challenging and skeptical board that asks the tough questions all the time. It's a real good start.
And in fact, the, one of the principal board members is a former principal assistant superintendent, superintendent, who, she was one to raise the question, she says, "You serve these kids, I'm meeting with the superintendents already, and they're wondering how to serve these kids, these trauma-affected kids, everyone's got a handful of them that is really challenging, and you already do this." And so, she's been one, she's been the liaison on this to push it, so it was, you know, we've thought of that, but she pushed it forward.
Good. Peter?
You speak of arrears, who actually owes you money?
Like, you want to...
No, no, I mean, are they districts or are they individuals?
Oh, they're all parents.
Parents?
Yeah.
The districts are responsible.
They pay, they're both.
I would assume, yeah.
More than half of your students are private-pay moms and dads.
And more than half are on free and reduced lunch, so it's low-income families.
I don't need the names.
Yeah.
I don't think we can do that.
But, you know, we serve, you know, high percentage of low-income students, and those families obviously struggle to, you know...
Sure. Bill?
Some feedback for us. What is not in the report that you would have liked to have seen in the report?
You actually did want to say something about that? Pretty comprehensive, seemed to...
Yeah, there were some minor points, you know, I mean, you know, that were just small, like, you know, you know, the word recently, you know, fun, I mean, I think if you look at our books, we had positive cash flow for almost every year, you know, so it depends how you read recently, like, yes, the last year's really not been the best, but, you know, we, it's not like we have, you know, a lot of years where we have negative cash flows, so mine are kind of, depending how it's read and tone, but mostly, I think it was very fair, and again, I think it affirmed a lot of what we were doing, and, you know, John was very articulate here, I thought.
We did send the final draft, as agreed by the team. We did send that final draft to the school and invited them to correct any errors of We did send that final draft to the school and invited them to correct any errors of fact. And they did, and it was helpful. Made it a better report. Very good. Any other questions or comments on the Board?
Could I?
And I wanted to invite you two to come up and talk. So, thank you, and you can take your seats, and we'll just have...
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
As far as, so this is the first time we've ever done this.
Yeah.
Feedback on the process in general. Was it worse than you thought it would be or better? Did you find it helpful, or, I mean, it's kind of like when, well, it's like when any other regulatory agency comes in, it's not really a happy moment, but...
Well, let's see. I think I'm still suffering a little trauma from the first meeting.
Yeah, I bet, I bet.
It was, would have been helpful to have some preparation as to what, what was really happening in terms of financial capacity. It was not necessarily clearly defined at that point, and so, there was kind of this reverberation.
I think we're in the same support group, by the way, as far as that.
Financial capacity out into the community, you know, into the world that I understand the capacity to monitor your paperwork is an important, you know, we got that later, but at that initial session, it was, it would have been helpful to have a little, you know, agenda or...
Yeah. I mean, the question originally, we thought we were answering was why the 990s get handed in? And that was, that was what we thought we were answering, and then it became this financial capacity, and then that became a governance question. The visiting team was great, I think. I mean, I think any school would relish that, probably, you know, except for like a slight worry about, like, what are they going to ask? But if you said, "Oh, we're going to keep sending teams out to talk to schools and just, you know, be supportive," and again, whoever communicated with us was really nice on, I think, on the front end. It was Jennifer, you know, but, and I think I had a chance to talk to Mark a little bit before, just like the tenor, he said, like, the tenor of this is to be, you know, help supportive, or whatever the word was, you know, because we're not trying to play gotcha here. This team, and I think you had that prior meeting, so whoever there, whoever came up with setting the tone for that, you know, that felt like the tone coming in, you know, it was like, you're not there to try to lift up the carpeting and say, "Oh, did you violate the mold spore law?" You know, it's like you were there to look at what we were doing and be supportive, and that was great, I think, you know. I'd be happy to give a letter of recommendation for other schools, you know, that this is a useful, you know, and supportive group.
We may need that.
Yeah. But I think, yeah, the meetings before this Board, you know, without knowing exactly what was on the agenda, and it felt sometimes like it was shifting. And again, I mean, you have to have the right to move in how you're looking at things, but, you know, the second meeting felt like we brought a lot of materials, and then, like, did it matter, you know? It was like, was that going to, anything we could have said there make a difference, you know? So, that was a little less feeling supportive, but, you know, it's up to you, your role as well, you know, so...
Good. Anything else? Thank you, all three of you. I'd like to invite Mark and Deborah to come on up very briefly and just share with us. By the way, one of the recommendations of the team is that you put the review team out of business. That is to say, you commissioned us to do the Compass School. We've done that. Can we go home now?
I didn't get paid.
Yeah, right, the big bucks. So, what are your thoughts?
It was a very positive experience, and I think that it was a good opportunity for all of the people involved to share information on all the perspectives about what's really happening in schools, and in particular, in independent schools. And I thought it was a wonderful opportunity for myself to learn and to work on the team, part of the review team, and I really enjoyed it.
And I too thought it was a, I thought it was a good and well-run process. I think that John, you as Chair, did a good job of reminding the team what the purpose was, what the scope was, and preventing scope creep so that it didn't turn into, gee, what, you know, what is going on under that rug, and, you know, it looks a little moldy and we should get, you know, the Department of Health and Safety in here. You know, we were focused, I think, appropriately. I think the team worked well. I think we had thoughtful differences, and we engaged those differences. I think that my one suggestion moving forward would be to make sure, I think that clarifying that once you're on a committee, you're serving the committee that's serving the State Board of Education, not representing whatever group you come from. That's how I approached it, anyway, and if I, maybe I approached it the wrong way, but I think I was approaching it the right way to say, you know, I was, I'm coming from the Council of Independent Schools. I wear the hat of Headmaster of Burn Burton Academy. In this role, I was a member of a committee, and I was there because of that background, but I was not representing any organization other than an informed perspective to look at an independent school. And quite frankly, and, you know, I say this in all seriousness, if, you know, if I didn't like what I saw in that visit, I would have felt perfectly comfortable, despite it being an independent school and my being the Council of Independent Schools, I would have been perfectly comfortable saying so and saying, "This is a school that shouldn't be doing what it's doing," or, "I have concerns about its ability financially." I felt good about it, but that was strictly, that was my perspective to lend to the committee. So, in the future, if there's a further, another committee, I guess I would emphasize that as you select members, that, you know, you serve the committee, you're a part of the committee, you know, don't go back to your agency and think you're representing the agency.
Right.
At least, I think that that's important.
Understood. And that's a challenge, though.
It is.
Yeah.
It very much is.
You're ex officio from the agency, and yet, we're there to be more lay, sort of thoughtful laypeople than experts.
Right.
We're not there in a capacity as experts.
Right.
And that was tricky for some of us, and I think we got through it.
I think so, too.
I think if the structure hadn't been as thoughtful as it was, and as clear, and as strength-based as it was in terms of mutual respectful interaction and really setting a really positive tone, I think it may have had different result, but I think that it was...
Yes, Bill?
Yes. What recommendations would you have for the independent school approval process in general, apart from this particular situation?
I'm not really clear on that myself just yet. I started my position on May 28th, and I've only recently plowed through the federal and state requirements for that, and so, I have ideas, but they're not solidified yet. So, I'm not really in a position to make any recommendations at this time.
Okay.
Very diplomatic response. Applaud your...
I think that's a fair comment, too. We had a conversation about, you know, where, during the process, you know, where you were at, sort of the review and the transition between the old process and the new process. So, I think that's a fair answer, though, too. I think punting right now on Bill's question is probably a good move. And we'll have you back later.
Well, even since the site visit to Compass, I've learned a ton, but still the same answer.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have a response to Bill's question?
I don't really have a strong position, other than keep it simple, but...
John, can I ask Mark a question?
Please.
Because we did have a little bit of a discussion, not specific to Compass School, but also, you know, independent schools probably start at probably the single digits and go up to Burn Burton's probably the second largest, and then St. John's Berry.
Right.
Larger schools of almost 1,000, a little short of 1,000 students. You talked a little bit about maybe a possibility, whether it's regional or mission-based, about maybe some of the longer, more established schools, whether it's in organizational development or just simply in time, of maybe offering some partnership between those. Do you have any more thoughts on that?
Yeah, that was coming from, you know, a place where, in this specific instance, we have a school that's 20 years old, and Burn Burton is approaching 200 years. And so, we're much more established in our governance structure and procedures and processes, and we're a much bigger institution, so there's, but there's a lot that's, that could be analogous, and there's some that, you know, you recognize that a school of 70 is very different than a school of 750. So, yeah, what I had offered up, and, you know, and I've offered to Rick privately, and I'll offer it publicly, is that, and this is, I don't mean to sound like we know everything, so it's not an offer of arrogance, or I hope it's not.
What use of partnership in my question?
But we and Burn Burton are happy to share one, one school's way of managing these processes. It's based on, you know, good governance practice. We've reviewed the best practices according to the National Association of Independent Schools, so, you know, we think about that, and there could be a way for certain schools to be resources to, you know, to ensure or to help schools that are developing their process accelerate that learning process, for whatever it's worth. But I don't, you know, I don't want to force that on people.
Well, that's, I mean, that's something for your organizations to think about.
Yeah.
To offer a kind of best practices, mentorship, relationships, or whatever.
Right.
I'm not sure, would be for you to figure that out, but there are some schools with a lot of experience, highly functioning, and then there are ones that are startups that are struggling, and...
Right.
It would seem that just as small businesses have access to a community service of other business people who have experience, right, there's their expertise available for nothing.
Right.
I could imagine you folks doing that, but that's completely out of our area of expertise.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. Anything else for the good of the school?
I was just, I would say I was happy to serve on this committee, and it felt like a real process, a thoughtful process, that reached the right conclusions, so...
Thank you for your service.
Can I just speak to the point about different roles, because there's like different, I think people learn from each other on that committee in a really positive way. And I know you made a really wonderful comment about coming from the private sector, the margins we work with would make mine here for Rick. And then, and then there was a question about fundraising, if I, you know, how much we can raise funds, and you were wonderful, saying, "Independent schools of this size don't raise them," you know? So, you know, the financial regulation people, they get a fair different place they were coming from, you know? So, just throw them in the mix without having educators around would be like they'd be in a different place. So, I think everyone learned from each other, like, watching outside, and I think that benefits everyone who was involved in it, it benefits the Board to have that, because if you're not day-to-day in a school, you think, "Why don't they raise a million dollars?" You know, like, you know, and to hear that, that's not realistic, you know? It's good to have that combination. So, whatever group you put together, I think, that diversity was really beneficial to us and beneficial within the committee itself.
Right. Good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We're now on to item I. We hope to hear from the Inspire School. Emily, do you think they might be out in the hall? So, Bill, if you want to put out a motion to decommission this review team, I keep bringing this up.
I would move that.
All right.
Be sure to get the word "decommissioned" in there.
You like that?
I might vote against it, John, just because I enjoyed the process so much.
Well, you might have to chair it next time.
Let's give you another job.
All right, I'll vote for it, then. That's fair enough.
The committed...
Yeah. The permanent Chair of the contemporary committee.
But let's just take, please, make yourselves comfortable. We have a small piece of business to finish up. It's fine. So, Bill, do you want to formalize that?
Yes, I move that we decommission the review team for the Compass School.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll move it, then, I guess.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Just to be clear, the motion is to decommission the review team, which was, I think, intended as an ad hoc team to serve a particular purpose. It has done so. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes.
To make of the motion? Is there discussion? Comments, questions? Then, are you ready to go? You are. Those in favor of the motion to decommission the review team, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and you have... Let us go. Thank you. We welcome you to the State Board of Education. Would you please identify yourself?
Mark Anderson. I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors for Inspire.
Bill Vrenos. I'm a Member of the Board of Directors.
Would you say your name?
Oh, Bill Vrenos. William Vrenos. I'm a Director.
Michael Bandler. I'm a CPA, and I'm a CFO.
We, I think, had expected the Executive Director is, neither, none of you are he?
No, that message didn't reach us. I apologize.
Emily, what were you missing here?
I received an email saying that the Executive Director is signing a last name, status, or something.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
So, let me just get the right paperwork, sorry. Cover a lot of ground in a day here. So, we have about 30 minutes and would be happy to listen to whatever you have to say.
Financial report?
I would say we ought, just a suggestion is that we ought to hear from the Chair of your Board. I must say, I'm disappointed that we don't have the Executive Director here. After all, the role of the Executive Director was somewhat central to the problem that triggered this review. And so, in the sense that the person was reporting to your Executive Director, who we understand has been let go by the school, a former Executive Director?
That's correct.
So...
Should we take this as a last meeting?
I'd really like to hear from the Executive Director. If I may, I think we can get some business done even without Rick here. I don't know why he's not here, but we have financial statements. We've had some, when things happen, I think we'd like to talk about it.
Do you have financial statements more recent than the 30th of June?
Yes, we provided you with July. We have a profit of about $8,000.
I haven't seen, we have not received on the Board financial statements for July or August.
I happen to have August with me. We're just coming to the end. It only finished late last night.
Right, understood.
I'm happy to distribute it, if you wish.
Yeah, I think we ought to see July and August, if you've got...
I do. I don't have multiple copies. I apologize.
Okay.
Have you folks got a prepared statement?
No. I honestly thought we were going to be asked questions. I apologize that I didn't understand that was the format.
Yeah, there was really no format presented to us. I thought we were here representing the school to answer some questions.
You received a letter from the former Chair of the Board dated when, Emily?
July 29th, 2019.
Right. And...
It says, "Review any written materials in advance if you have questions, any information you want to provide." It didn't really say anything about a prepared statement or anything. I mean, I'm not nitpicking, but, you know, I'd be happy to make a statement right now. You know, we've been committed to righting the ship. Our financials are in order. We've made payroll. We started paying off our debts. We have 19 students, so we've gained three students since we last met, and, you know, we're committed to moving forward and doing a good job. We have started to put financial safeguards in place. collectibles are in line with continuing to make payroll, eke out a small profit. We've actually hired three people because we have new students. Our budget for this year balances and then some a little bit. You know, I think things are heading in the right direction. We've been able to acquire a line of credit with the financial information we've provided to the bank. We've done a lot of work in the last month.
So, how long have you been on the Board, sir?
Since the beginning. I'm the founder of the school. My wife and I.
Okay.
Still 10 years.
And, Mr. Andrews?
Anderson, sir.
Anderson, how long have you been on the Board?
I believe approximately two years, and I just took over as Chair.
And the former Chair was?
Kathleen Vrenos, my wife.
Your partner, yes. Okay. When I looked at your balance sheet for, as of the 30th of June?
Yes, sir.
It looked like, from a cash point of view, you were really underwater.
I have good news about that.
Right.
Two pieces of good news. I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Jordan.
No, fair.
First, we've been able to negotiate a $75,000 line of credit with the Brattleborough Savings and Loan, which you mentioned too. Short-term, in case, and during the summer, we have found out, sometimes it's a little hard to get the money from the school boards, that they'll run a little bit late in paying us, so we established that. We've borrowed nothing on that, and Bill here modestly has, on a short-term basis, reached into his pocket and loaned us $25,000, which we will be paying back to him, we're ready to pay back to him. As we sit here right now, all payroll has been paid, completely current, current payroll taxes are completely current.
About past payroll taxes?
Yes. We have made approximately $10,000 of payments towards that. I would suspect, and this is jumping forward, we were running at 16 students during the summer. We're now at 19, will probably go to 20 within the day. We're considering a particular student as to whether that's an appropriate one or not. If not, we'll get somebody else. We will become significantly profitable. We, as that statement shows, we, talking rough numbers, came up with a net income of about $8,000 for July, about 20 for August. If, with 19 students or 20 students, I would anticipate a profit between 20 and $40,000 every month. So, we very much will turn around the cash flow. We've begun that process. We have paid every bill that exists, other than the payroll taxes, and you're quite right, I don't mean to in any way not address that. We've paid everything. Literally, the bills from last week have been paid. The staff has been paid in full, current payroll taxes, and we are amortizing the old one. There were two credit cards, and I'm there, I don't know if you recall, about four months now, plus or minus a little bit. I say I inherited two credit cards with approximately $10,000 balance, not current activity, but a rolling balance on it.
One was for $5,000?
Yeah.
And what was the other?
The other one was about the same.
To, and who was, who was?
Same thing. We had two cards. One was in the name of, actually, the two employees that have issues, Kristen and Troy. Each had a balance of about $5,000, and I'm talking roughly.
Our previous director.
The previous executive, Director Troy, I forget his last name.
Can I?
So, I don't, it's news to me that you had issues with the previous executive, financial issues with the previous executive director.
May I speak?
Is that news to anybody from here? The testimony I recall was, from last time, was that you had issues with, I think, a bookkeeper.
That was Kristen.
And that, and also that the Board had contributed $100,000 to cover the gap. You mentioned 25?
That's, that's now. That was
That's in addition to. He contributed, I
It was a short-term loan to cover payroll because we had so many accounts receivables.
Speaking now of the 25 or the 100?
No, the 100 was, was a gift. The 25 was a loan.
And, okay, very good.
Which is now being paid off within a matter of days. Let me come to that very specifically, because I think it might be helpful. We knew, and when we were last here, there was discussion that there were two investigations that are going on, we, which we are not privy to, just to be very clear. We don't specifically know the content of those investigations. We knew that there was money, I'll be polite, that it was questionable, that had been taken by Kristen Smith. We were aware of that beside the investigation.
Are you at liberty to be disclosing her name in public?
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Okay, I apologize then. I didn't know I shouldn't.
I don't know that. I'm only asking you.
No one has said to me not to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should. No one's told us not to.
At the last meeting, no names were given.
Okay, then I apologize.
Okay.
We have since, and I'll use the term loosely, which is where I was going to go, which I thought was prudent, and it was somewhat at my urging, begun to look into the details of the transactions that were questionable, a little bit further, besides what other outside investigation might be going on. Unless we, for ourselves, wanted to see what happened and get some sense of what the situation is. It is our, or at least my opinion, that each of the checks at issue were signed by the person who I will not name, now the former executive director. So, there's at least a question as to whether he was involved in it as well.
I think it's important to note that, at this time, we have no evidence to support that there's a, either a violation of a person's diligence, fiduciary responsibility, or law of estate, but we also
In connection with both, or?
In connection with the former executive director.
Thank you.
However, the executive director is the chief executive of the organization, and if there is something going on, they're also, they do have a duty and a responsibility.
Would seem to be an error of omission, if not commission.
So, over the time of, I would say, probably since, what was it, September, October, that we started unpeeling this onion, we have begun inquiries into the information that we found. The former executive director has, has been the focus of some of that scrutiny from our own internal perspective. We're also aware that there were investigations by outside organizations regarding him specifically. We do not know the status of those investigations. I believe this Board was one of the authorities conducting one of those investigations. We don't know the status of those investigations. We're not privy to it. We're aware of the financial issue with the former bookkeeper.
Just to clarify, this Board is not conducting any investigation, other than these public conversations with you? Perhaps the agency is, but it's certainly not this Board.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll just add, you know, the former executive director did an, I guess, he did an excellent job putting in place educational frameworks for the kids, technology, structure. He was fantastic on the educational side. I can't speak to what happened on the financial side. My, I'm going to give my gut feeling, is he just was duped. I hardly believe there's any malfeasance there. He's just not that guy.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. He did sign the, well, he did sign the checks.
Yeah.
But I, I don't, you know.
And I think it's important to note that the reason he's the former director is he had opted to let his contract end. It was not a termination from the Board. We accepted his resignation ultimately.
I see.
So, we have not made a, any sort of declaration. We have no information before us where we feel that we can positively assign blame for the behavior, but it is an open inquiry of the Board and the school.
I'd just add one more thing, just to wrap it up. Our attention hasn't really been there. We've been trying to put out the fires, keep the school open for our kids and our employees.
Understood.
We'll worry about that stuff later.
I have some specifics about your accounting, but I want to invite the Board members, all of them, to ask any questions that they wish. Yes, please.
What's the tuition?
For student.
Excuse me?
Tuition for student.
Approximately $87,000. I don't know the breakage, but approximately $87,000 annually.
There's some pluses and minuses based on whether they require a one-to-one. A one-to-one is directly added to the tuition. Some of the services and fees are added to the tuition, and some are billed separately, so it's, I don't think any two kids have exactly the same tuition.
These are students with very acute needs, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Other questions?
Have you thought about any safeguards in regards to the checks? I know it's a, it's two, two people have to sign, or are there other?
Yeah, we've, we do have dual signatories now. We've also tried to distribute a lot of responsibilities amongst four people, which lessens the ability of a single person to do anything nefarious. There is an extensive memo on procedures that was previously submitted. I don't know if it reached the actual Board members.
We have, we have a two-page document called Procedures and Plans to Improve Internal Control of Financial Reporting. That's all we have received. Is there anything more than that?
Yes, I'm in the process of producing some additional suggestions.
So, nothing else has been sent to us?
It has not yet been sent. That one was
What date is this?
I don't recall exactly. I would guess around July 1st. Is that about right?
Just for future reference, it's helpful to the Board to see dated documents, and also to understand who wrote this. It's just, we don't know whether this is 10 years old or this was developed in response to your situation.
Would you like me to submit that, to check and submit that information to you? I can check the exact date. I can tell you the author is me.
When you send us your elaborated version of this, just please be sure it's clear who drafted it and what date. So, in your packet, everybody, there is a document, it's item I-2, which outlines these sort of fail-safe backup systems that, that you hope will address or protect against repetition of these misbehaviors. Other questions?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
Minutes from last month says that Simmons would communicate with the school's legal staff, and that financial capacity does not need money. And did you in fact communicate with them, and did we get a response?
Yes, I spoke to the school's legal counsel several times in between the last meeting and today.
What was the upshot of that?
There were planning conversations about who would be here and what kind of information there is in it, which is in the packet.
Yeah, the, the letter dated 29 July from, was, was from, written, I believe, by counsel and signed by the Chair of this Board. And the, the school was reminded, you at least were present for that discussion, and the vote of the Board stating that the Board reasonably believes that the school lacks financial capacity to meet its stated objectives. That was the finding of the Board based upon the testimony it had received at its 17-July meeting. So, it, the challenge for you folks is to convince us that that finding either was in error or no longer applies. And you were given an opportunity to provide information that demonstrates remedial steps you've taken today. It's, it's a little frustrating not to have your recent financials, because presumably June was about as bad as it gets for you guys. But I would like to have you explain a few things in the June statement. In accounts receivable, you list $32,000 in accounts receivable, as of June 30. What percentage of those are over 90 days?
None. They're all within the covered mark.
They're all covered. You don't have any over 90. Great. What is undeposited funds? You had $52,000 of undeposited funds.
That means checks that had come in and were in the process of being processed, but had not yet physically been brought to the bank. The checks tend to be very few, far between, and very large, so that a single check, in some of the school districts, could be three, four, five, or six students, so it's not unusual to get a check for 30 or $40,000.
So, you had one or two of those sitting around?
Yeah. Well, I don't say sitting around. They literally could have come in the day of June 30 or June 29.
Okay.
We, the general procedure is to get the money, clearly when we were tight on money, was to get the money to the bank as fast as we could.
Right. Simple, what is simple, this is now in payables?
Yes.
What is simple payable?
We had an employee who elected a retirement plan, which is called a simple. We had been withholding money from his paycheck, and we have since remitted the money to an institution of his choosing.
So, you were at that time behind in your obligations to that retirement plan?
That's correct.
That was, as reported by the newspaper. And at that time, you were $5,500 behind, some are all of the $5,500 due to the Vermont unemployment laws in arrears?
No, that, that's not, there are payroll taxes in arrears, and you, I'm sure you're going to ask me about it in a minute, but that's just the quarterly payment. There is, it's paid each quarter, one payment.
So, at that time, end of June, you owed the, you had federal unemployment obligations of $98,000, of which some percent were in arrears?
All of that number is over, is in arrears.
And is all of that, all of that has not been cleaned up?
Well, two things have happened with that, to go a little bit beyond what you just asked. First, we've met with the IRS. They came to see us, and we had, they have agreed to abate all penalties. They have found under the circumstances, having had their questions answered and such, that they would abate all, that, that, there were no penalties included in the number, but in addition to that, there had been assessed penalties, which have now been completely abated. And we made a request for a payment plan, because we're clearly not in a position to write a single check for $90,000, and they said they were favorably inclined. We discussed it a little bit. They, and I being cautious, and maybe that's my nature, I asked for three years with installments each month to be paid. I believe we can liquidate it by June, but I'd rather have more time so there'll be no future problem with them.
So, at this point, as of 30 August, first class on the books?
Yeah.
What do you have outstanding as a federal?
It's about 90. I believe, I just handed you the finance, I don't know
Yeah, I passed it around.
I believe it's about 90. We've made, I think, three or four payments of 2,500. I don't want to misstate, but we've been paying voluntarily. The plan is not yet in place, but we felt that that would encourage them or help us get the plan approved. We've been making voluntary payments every time we have a payroll.
So, you have an agreement with the feds. I say you've got about $90,000 outstanding.
That's about right.
You have a three-year agreement with the feds?
That's what we've asked for. We do not have a document.
We're waiting for them to formally accept it, but we think that's what they're going to do.
Okay. So, you got to dig out?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
In the meantime, we're making voluntary payments.
Right, right. Who is base date, and why were they owed $20,000?
During the, the bottom of the financial experience, several insurance policies were canceled, including the employee's medical insurance. We had one employee who gave birth during that period, that's the medical center.
Is that the brought-up today?
They, they gave birth during that period of time where the Blue Cross Blue Shield policy had been canceled or suspended. So, the Board stepped forward and said we would pay for the medical care that the employee required. That's the medical care for the employee during the period that the hospitalization plan was not in effect.
Has that account been paid?
Not in full. They've given, they've agreed to, in writing, a two-year payment schedule, and we've begun to make the payments. We're current in the agreed-upon payment plan, if that's the right way to say it.
Okay. Questions from the Board? Questions from the board? All right, board. What do you want to do about this?
I guess I have a question. In your projected budget for expenses, you zeroed out a lot of expenses that you had this year moving forward.
Yes.
Do you not anticipate having a bookkeeper, advertising, cleaning costs, speech therapy?
I can go through each one of them. There's a reason for each one, but the answer... The short answer is yes. The situational relationships have changed. In one case, the landlord is paying for the cleaning rather than us paying for it. In another case, I've become a consultant, which is put in a different place rather than have the employee, whose name I'm not going to repeat again, who we had a problem with. So we do not have such an employee on staff at this point in time. And if you want to go through each one of them, I could tell you the story of what's changed.
It certainly bought you considerable savings.
But I have to say this, and I agree with the point that you made. Towards your end, you may want us back again sometime at your next meeting because we didn't have the person here who you'd like to have here. I would suggest that we now that we're... That's based upon fifteen or sixteen students. We're now at nineteen. So though it's true that the cost reductions, and that's... You're right. There are certain things which have changed from year to year. There is now a very significant, several hundred thousand dollars change in the revenue side of the business, so that that would... We're talking for version two.
Three more kids, two more employees.
Let me just try this out with you, board. My first, having just finished the review team and the work involved with it, my inclination is to not leap to that as a solution right away. I would like to ask you to think about requesting, instructing these folks to come back to us for the September meeting. And at which time, I think we not only would like to see financials through October... I'm sorry, August, pardon me. On the same page with your thirty-June financials, so we can go all... Your balance sheet, your income statement.
Sure.
For both in one page, so that we can see the progress you've made. With notes, please. Notes that explain much of the kind of stuff that you've told us, but notes that explain that you... We now have an agreement to... Whatever explains... Whatever helps us understand your way out of this. The second thing is that the more this conversation goes on and we understand that your executive director was at the best, inattentive, that raises questions for us about your governance. It's pretty hard for a tightly-run organization and a well-balanced organization that brings together administration and governance effectively, for administration to go on for very long, whiffing on the ball. And it appears that your board was inattentive to that performance in the sense that it was allowed to go on for some time. So I think we need to understand more about your board. Who was on it then, who is on it now? Something about the background. I'm sure you both bring very valuable background, I haven't any doubt of that. And you, sir, have been very generous, and I think that's most admirable. But I think it's... This is more than just about somebody messing around with the money. It's that somebody messed around with the money and neither the executive director nor the board was very quick to see that. So I think for this board, we have learned that financial capacity consists of more than about money, balance sheets, income statements. It has to do with the entire capability of the school to assure its own financial future, which of course involves boards of directors as much as it involves executive directors and bookkeepers.
May I say something?
Yes, certainly.
There were failures of institutions too, for instance, our accountants, who in the past had alerted us when things were... Basically, we didn't hear from them and then we find out they were closing. So in what is a very bad timing, our accountants did not alert us. Similarly, the bank, there were measures in place with some of the accounts where there were funds probably were not supposed to be shifted from one fund to another, yet the bank allowed it to happen. So just... I'm not shifting...
Sort of mitigating.
I'm not shifting responsibility away from the board,
I hear it.
but there's a lot of moving parts. It's really... It was a perfect storm of moving parts that went in the wrong direction. And I'll just go back to where I started. We're doing everything we can to scramble and make sure this place stays open and we're committed to our kids, but we have a lot of work to do and we know it.
I'm sorry. Please.
Just as your diligent committee member on the previous process, I agree with you that if we're going to leap into another visitation process that maybe the board could find other people to do it. It wasn't like that. But I will say this for the September meeting. The burden is on you, I think, at least as a voting member of this board. The burden is on you to come to the next meeting with statements, written documents, and evidence that causes us not to go to the next level. So I just say that. I just want to say that for the next meeting, you don't have to respond to it at all. That's what I'm looking for, is something really clear from you guys.
Drafting such a document right now, which is more forward-looking. These gentlemen don't know it yet, so I'm not going to disclose to surprise what I'm going to recommend. But my question is, do you want us to bring paperwork to... I just don't want to have a misunderstanding again.
I get it, yeah.
And I'll take my share of responsibility for the misunderstanding. Would you like us to submit to council a copy of written documents of various kinds or physically bring them to the meeting with enough copies to...
I'd like to have it timed, right, John?
I have it timed.
I have it timed. I have it timed. Don't bring anything. Send it well in advance.
Is there a deadline before the next meeting?
Well, the next meeting is the 18th, 19th. The 18th in particular. The 19th is not... You're not on the agenda for that day. And ten days before is a minimum. These are... These are people with day jobs like you folks.
In this way, Mr. Chairman, it spares you the expense of photocopying as well. If you give it to the agency electronically, they will send it to us in the mail. In the last... I mean, what I'm saying is convince me, and I want you to. So the next meeting, I really... I really want to be sold with the idea that I understand what you guys do and it's a great mission and you guys do a good job at it, but you know, I think that we have to get a level of comfort that you guys are on the right trajectory. I mean, the fact that your numbers are up is great news and... So I think that's... I'm looking forward to the September meeting, hearing from you guys in more detail.
I'm totally convinced financially we're headed in the right direction.
Yep.
And I'm not really losing any sleep financially anymore. The governance is more how the sausage is made and that's a lot of work. And then you have to follow through on it, you know? And you know, the school, I'll just say in a broad stroke that the school ran successfully for a long time as a small school without a lot of need to, you know? And it got bigger. And as it got bigger...
It got more complicated.
It got more complicated. And then some people took advantage of that and here we are. Again, we're doing what we have to do.
May I ask a good question?
Yes, please.
Just to make it clear, what question are we trying to answer for your financial capability or is there something else?
Let's really... I'll defer to the chair, but I think that's what I'm looking at, you know, having participated in the last process. Right, Mr. Chairman?
There is a second aspect which is very important, and it hasn't been said. It's strange that I'm saying this. Not only does there need to be systems and procedures as to how things are supposed to be done, but there has to be regular, as you've asked for yourselves, financial reporting to the powers that be internally as well as externally. And there has to be a feeling of confidence that the numbers that are being received are correct. As we talked about at the last meeting, part of the problem was that numbers were supplied, which turned out to not be accurate. Various decisions were made by the board based upon numbers that did not reflect reality and would never have been made if the accurate numbers had been in their hands, which is part of the report that I'm writing, that there needs to be a process to assure the accuracy of the numbers, not only that we're going to give to you, but that are given to the board on a regular periodic basis so they can be comfortable that they can make decisions based on reality, not based upon something else.
I want to hear from all the board members. You've heard our colleague, John O'Keefe. Do others feel that way or is there a different kind of feeling? Bill?
I would like to see the September report be a financial... Include a financial plan for the year, what your budget is and your revenues. And I would like September to be relatively short, but go out a year from now. And I would like to hear how you're doing on that financial plan one year from now.
So what I'm hearing is from me, you've been asked to provide comparison of income statement and balance sheet for the 30th of August, side by side with 30 June.
Yes.
You're asking... You're hearing from Mr. Mathis about your budget and explanations to questions such as our colleague here asked. Why is this different?
Yes, understood.
What are you leaving out? I love your term that governance is sort of like sausage being made. Yes, it is. We would want to see what you have in writing as board procedures. For example, there's some talk about whether or not financial statements were filed on a regular basis with the board. We need to understand, what are your board expectations and rules about things like that? Anything that relates to governance. Mr. Varnos, I mean, I have great regard for you by virtue of having founded this school and your support of the school, but it doesn't suffice for us to rely upon your assertions that we've got this under control.
No, I understand.
So I think...
I totally understand.
I think a roadmap, for example...
I'm not happy I'm here either, by the way.
I think a roadmap about how you... What steps you have in mind to strengthen governance and to strengthen financial oversight will be the steps that give us confidence that your financial capacity is under repair and has good prospect of restoring your financial capacity and getting out from the debt that you've settled yourselves with. Is that a fair characterization of what we want to see?
But that's a sustained language that I can make a motion on.
Yeah, welcome to it if you wish.
Can I just...
You give the summary.
Do you have to repeat it? You got what we're after and Emily, are you capturing much of this? And you can from the tape.
Yeah.
If you would, please. Emily and I will work together. Yes, Kim.
I just think the one-year budget is going to be really important. So the postmortem from June 30, but not just two months' worth of financials, but your budget for the coming year in light of the reality, which would include those payments that you're expected to make on schedule on those where you're in arrears. So that would be helpful to see. I think the governance picture is a sustainability story. I think the generosity of donorship to get you guys through this is definitely admirable. But I think you also will be looking to see that your processes in place, your governance in place, is a monitoring process that prevents this for you going forward so that you are sustainable for the kids you want to serve. And so that would be the vein in which I would be looking to see the story you'll write that overlays the financials and helps us see your progress moving forward, I think. Is, for my sake, that would be helpful.
Okay. So how about this, that the board has continuing concerns about how the school will go about restoring its financial strength and wishes to see ten days in advance of the next meeting, which is the 18th, the documentation that we've outlined to you. Show us the most recently ended school year, the difference between budget and actual, with explanations. Show us 30 June compared to 30 August with explanations of the differences. And for example, as of 30 June, you owed ninety-eight thousand dollars to the... On payroll taxes.
Federal government.
You now owe ninety thousand with a note that explains you're on a payment plan, so on, so on.
Sure.
And then, if you would, please, show us your actual budget for the prior year, 2018, 2019, compared to your... I'm sorry, your actuals for 2018, 2019, plus your budget for 2019, 2020. Okay?
Sure.
On one page, so that we can see it itemized by, in some considerable detail.
Now, not to overwhelm you with board members, how many would you like to have appear?
I don't think we need to see them all. We need to see your executive director. We're very happy to see you. I think, though, we need some background on your board. Who are they? How long have they served? What's their... What expertise do they bring to the board? So this goes...
So I might send my wife.
So we've... The qualitative stuff we've outlined. The other part of what we're after is to understand that your board, if it... And please write for us these things that we've just now heard about, some about an accounting firm that had let you down, things like that. Because I think that's news to us. We would have thought we would have heard that last month.
Well, if I can give you an example, we had an executive director a few years ago who thought we didn't have enough phone lines and opened up his own phone account on the school. And they called us and said, "Did you give him permission to get his own phone?" And we said, "No." And this was four or five years ago. And now this whole thing's blown up. They don't call us at all, right? So I mean, we had an accounting firm that we relied on that was very diligent. And so we backtracked, like, "Where were you guys?" And they closed. You know, so that's an example, you know? We did have things in place.
We need to move on.
Yeah.
Yes, gentlemen? Bill?
I just want to make sure we've got the elements of the motion in there properly transcribed here.
Maureen and Emily, you can work with the other details of what we want. Is that a motion that you all feel you're prepared to act on?
So can I just make sure I read correctly, you're asking for FY19 budget versus actual, year-to-date, August 31st of this year? And then FY20?
Yes.
Budget and balance sheet, so the full set of financials for those timeframes. Am I... Did I get that right? And then the notes that would accompany it with the cover story, if you will, that outlines the change in improvement in process, procedure, and governance monitoring?
Right. Good, thank you. It's just been brought to my attention. I think we also want to have an explanation of any changes in the scope of things such as health insurance, contributions to retirement plans, between what was budgeted for 2018, 19, and is now planned. We need to... We need to just see that documented so that we understand how you're getting to... What's being given up in order to get where you're going?
I'm good with everything that you've said. There's one item that you've mentioned that I don't know if it exists or not. And to my knowledge, it does not exist. I do not know a budget for 18, 19.
There is one.
You do have one.
Must be.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just wanted to be sure.
And add one more thing. The wild card's always October when the health plans come up. The budget always changes a little bit in October.
Well, what are you assuming in your budget? I think that's what we're going on.
We're going to assume it's going to go up.
Marginal notations are important to us. Right. Oh, would you just make that point? My colleague is just noticing that your healthcare budget is projected to go down.
I believe we went from a gold or platinum plan to a reduced plan, maybe silver.
Please explain that, and you know. Good. Thank you. We need to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Yes, thank you. We can do so. It's been moved and seconded to direct... It's been moved and seconded to direct the Inspire organization to furnish us with a whole lot of information. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have adopted that motion, thank you.
Maybe more a conversation for another meeting, or even our retreat.
Yes.
In that we, I guess you guys have never had these before, and we've now had two.
Right.
And in both cases, the feedback we're getting is that they're not clear on what is expected when they're coming before us the first time. So I'm wondering if we might think about what satisfies our interests in avoiding the process of having to do the visits, because round one has provided more clarity around, specifically what we're seeking. It, it occurs to me that if they are finding themselves in the position where we are questioning this, it may not be intuitive. And I think we could probably do better to inform the process and not, and make that time more productive for everybody.
I was, I was kind of surprised, my departure is overdue, by the way.
Yes, of course, thank you for staying.
But I was pretty surprised, I want to stay for the end of that, I was pretty surprised, if I had come here, I would be more, I would have organized myself in a way to convince this board that I had solved the issues that brought me here to start.
Yeah.
Versus, okay, what questions do you have for me? At work, when I, when somebody calls me very angry, I'll call them back and just say, it's John, and then I'll pause and wait for them to begin to tell me why they called me and left me an angry voicemail. Same with this, they seem to just pause and say, why are we here?
Right.
And, so I, I don't know, I...
Yeah, but I think that if, there's no reason for the process not to be transparent if we know what we're looking for.
Yes.
And I think that that, taking away from the feedback received from what was a very good interview and visit process, versus what they are describing as sort of a lack of clarity on the first part of it, and I, again, I guess I will say, if they are finding themselves in that struggling position where they didn't pick up on other things that we're worried about, they may not have the intuition to know what it is that satisfies the, the interest of knowing what, you don't know what you don't know sometimes.
Yeah.
And I think if we come to a place where we know what that is, that could streamline the process in hopes that we don't have more of these, but also in hopes that they don't all have to become site visits.
Yes. Well, we could be more specific.
But I appreciated you guys doing that.
Well...
That was a lot of fun.
That part was really good for everyone.
Mr. Chairman, my parents are showing up today, and it's not why I'm leaving.
Yes.
It would be why I would stay, but I have something else, so...
Now it's recorded.
The camera's on.
That's, that's fine, I'm comfortable, I'll tell them that when I get to my house.
Thank you for staying this long.
Thank you, thank you. I'll see you in September.
We, just, uh, let's see.
They're coming, they're coming. Uh-oh. There goes the corner.
We need five, yeah, we got it, we got it.
Your death next to you.
Yeah, yeah, I can do it. Just, just one, just to finish up on Kim's point, the letter to Mrs. Varnos, Mr. Varnos is part wife, and to a Mr. White, Craig White, whoever that is.
He was...
I see, I see. Was, that the board, reminding them, since they were present, that the board approved a motion stating that it reasonably believes the school lacks financial past immediate stated objectives, the language from the law. And the next paragraph, our, our then-chair said, "You are entitled to an opportunity to respond to this finding and provide information that demonstrates remedial steps you have taken to date, or information to rebut the finding above." So, these folks were pretty much told, you better come here to convince us either that we're wrong, or that we fixed it. And they failed to do both. So, we're, I think it's a generous act to give them another crack at it. Let's, we have people who have come on time, ahead of time, thank you for being here. Give me a moment.
Can I just say?
Yes, John.
Does this, these last two issues, does this portend on continued...
Our, our continued involvement in these kinds of issues? I, I would hope that, that, that the gatekeepers or the overseers of this, from the agency or whoever is, is going to be more engaged in this process, or what do we think about this?
Well, I guess, at the moment, I would have to think that these are both rather extraordinary circumstances. In the case of the Compass School, the former treasurer left, another member who was really, you know, it was just circumstantial, a sort of a perfect storm of lapse of attentiveness to filing your 990 forms, and, by the way, the second oversight was failing to report this to the secretary, as is required by their agreement. This one seems to be a bit of a, kind of perfect storm of its own, too. They're both schools which have had financial strength and success for a period of time, and then suddenly things came apart. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a lesson, hopefully, to other schools, that make sure you have robust financial oversight capabilities within your organization, lest you too be struck by this perfect storm of system failure. But I don't think any of us, I, I, I think, you know, I think in fairness to the agency, I don't see how they could have been doing anything that would have anticipated or corrected these situations.
Well, I think to, Peter, I think this is a new process that has been given to the board, I think under Act 173, actually.
Right.
I believe.
Okay.
So, you know, if, you know, as we work through roles and responsibilities, I think you're raising the question, is this an appropriate function of the board? But as it stands right now, this is your responsibility. We have our responsibilities, we'll get into in a minute with the next agenda item.
Yeah.
I'm doing some scrutiny relative to approval.
Right, right.
But you, you've been given this new authority over financial viability.
But these are very tight budgets, these are...
Right, yeah, so, but it's just how much capacity can a body such as yourself get into? And we have, we have leveraged very early on a suggestion in the statutory language to consult with the Department of Financial Regulation.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, we didn't have to do that, but we've, we've brought them in as a resource, hoping to, you know, provide some better guidelines going forward on the approval process itself, but also in these situations. But the question I would have, just watching as it unfolded, is this an appropriate function for this board? And I think that's something to ask yourselves as you go through.
Actually, the, the authority of the board to ask a school to come, explain itself, has existed for some time.
Oh, no, no, I'm not questioning that.
The authority of the board to form a review team and go visit, that's a rather different matter.
Yeah.
And that's new. Okay. So we're on to item J. I apologize that we're running late. And we, as you know, item J is the renewal of approval of general and special education approvals, for general and special education. In the case of three institutions in the state, and in order, we will take them up, Linden Institute, Fayhane Knob Memorial School, and Brookhaven. We'll take them up in that order if the folks are here for that, and if they're not, we'll split things around. So, tell us, who's here representing who?
Twilight, head of school.
Okay, it's all right, because we're being here. And you, sir?
Brockhaven.
Brookhaven, the three of you.
Just the two of us.
Two of you. Your names, please.
Brett Murphy, Executive Director.
And Ashley Crook, the Special Education Coordinator.
And you, ma'am, by the aisle?
Yep, I'm Shelley Guinness, I'm the Program Director for the Fayhane Knob Memorial School.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you all for making the long drive up here, over here, down here. Before you come to the table, if indeed we even ask you to, thank you for being here. So, board members, you have three green sheets in front of you. And the first let's take up is Linden Institute. And you have not only the green sheet with the recommendation of the agency, but also the report of the agency's staff or contract, and/or contractors who visited the school. I believe you used an outside contractor for the general ed, and you used agency staff for the special ed approvals, is that correct?
Yes, except when they, in the case of, like, LI had gone through NIESC accreditation, which isn't...
Of course, right, LI, and does nothing. So in the case of Linden Institute, we are only being asked about the renewal of special education approval, since, as you all understand, for general education purposes, we rely upon NIESC's certifications. You'll notice that the accreditation is proposed, the, I'm sorry, the approval is proposed for four years, so that it will be coincidental with the renewal recommendation of NIESC in the year 2023.
You are, the board, we're asking the board to give them approval for both, a general independent school and special education. We use NIESC accreditation to verify the general ed component, but...
Thank you.
We are asking the board to act on approval for both.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. So, is there any comment or question on this by the board? Would anybody like to make a motion?
As, as written. As written.
Okay. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board act favorably on the Secretary's recommended action, which you see on your J1 sheet, that the State Board of Education grant renewal of general independent school approval, and special education independent school approval, so on and so forth, for a four-year term through June 30th, 2023. And there is a conditional here about reporting within five business days, any changes in enrollment program, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration. I might say, by the way, you just walked in on the tail end of a discussion in which the school had failed to provide notice of a significant change in its financial capacity. And so, that doesn't endear an institution to this board, nor to the agency, so, let that be an object lesson of its own. Board, do you have any, do you have any further discussion of the motion before you?
Yes, I'm curious about this last page, and the comments, they seem atypical.
What is your curiosity, sir?
I'm trying to recall if we have seen J6 type paper before. Page six, responses from the LI head of school. Is it just me, or is this a departure?
We've had responses from the school previously, I think maybe the formatting, it was cut in as an email response, and we've pasted it in here. But I've, I've seen in my tenure as secretary, schools responding to findings.
Okay.
We've, we've seen to this occasionally, but it's not consistent. Maybe not looking like this, because it's cut in...
The format's different.
Yeah, yeah, it's cut in an email response.
Hi, any other comments or questions? I'd like to make an observation, and the observation applies in all three cases, in the Fayhane Knob School approval, and in the Brookhaven approval. In all three cases, the agency contractor, no, I'm sorry, it would be agency staff.
Or special education agency here.
On the, on page four of six, you will see, there's a, something at the, toward the top of page four of six called "Note on Approval." AOE, in this case, recommends Linden Institute ensure implementation of the following prior to its next review. And then it talks about consistent, ongoing documentation with regard to IEPs, so on. A similar comment is made by the visiting teams to the other two schools, your schools. You see that on your reports. In this case, the thought is that, well, I guess, I guess my concern about this is, if this is a problem worth mentioning, it would feel like, do we not want to know that it's been addressed and resolved? Or are we willing to say, well, we told you about it four years ago, we still haven't done it, we'll tell you about it now for another five years? I guess, the question I have is sort of, where's the stick that goes with this problem?
We don't have to approve them for five years, we can approve them for one and say you have to come back in some set period of time.
We could do that. But I guess my first question is, what's the agency's view on this?
So you're talking about documentation note on page four?
Yeah, on page, on page four.
Note on approval.
Yeah, that, basically, it says...
Ongoing documentation.
These folks need to fix something.
Yeah, it's...
But, but nobody's around to see that it's done.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, based on my conversation we had this morning on the complexity of complying with special education in our state, that, in my experience, I think we would have, we could have found a similar finding in any school district in the state.
Uh-huh.
You know, and I think we, to your point about how we follow up on that, we're required to do monitoring, so we have a monitoring requirement. If we were to go out and we do regularly monitor school districts, if we were to monitor the school districts that were involved in the ecosystem around LI, we would be testing, we'd be pulling a certain sample of this paperwork to monitor.
Right.
So we have a federal requirement for monitoring that goes on regardless of this approval process.
But it doesn't apply to these two.
It would catch them in the process, because we'd be monitoring the public school districts.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I, I've seen that in action, so it's, that would, so there's other monitoring activities outside of this approval process. But I would say the issue of documentation in special education isn't unique, I would guess, to these institutions. I'd say it's pretty common throughout the entire system, including public education systems.
Well, apropos of our conversation this morning, would it be your assessment that the agencies, under the new rules, however they may come to pass, will the agency's standards about this simplify or be diminished in some way?
That's a good question. I don't know if I'd, I'd say diminished or not, but we are coincidentally also designing a new monitoring process. I think one of the things, as I mentioned earlier, it depends on what tools we have, I think one of the things that would greatly simplify this, if we took on at some point having a statewide special education information system, which is very, very common in most states, meaning that we could do monitoring from Montpelier without having to go on-site and pull records and so forth.
Sure, sure.
But we have a very uneven implementation of software across the state in special ed, so it's really hard for us to do any sort of remote monitoring. But I think both, we're seeking to create a new process that certainly will be done in concert with rolling out any anticipated regulations under 173, but we have a new State Director of Special Education, we'd love to bring her to a meeting sometime, and you can meet her. But we, we have some work for ourselves on revising our monitoring process.
So I guess the, the sort of question that has come up for me is, when a, a, a site visit returns the advice that this school is not in compliance with standards and expectations with respect to, in this case, IEP records, but there's no incentive or enforcement mechanism saying, and you need to be, other than do. and you need to be, other than do. Say you should be, there's, there's no string on this. And I have wondered if the board should consider, well, you could do it the way you say, Bill, just give them an approval for one year. But what's an approval for one year if it's not clear what needs to be fixed?
Well, I think you have to put the expectation in there.
Yes.
And I would just, to qualify your comment, we, you know, my, this is my recommendation. We're comfortable recommending approval for them. We're not suggesting that there's a finding here that is not, is strong enough to not recommend approval or a qualified approval.
Right, right.
We also have other processes outside of your purview of your authority where we monitor these things in order to comply with federal law.
Right, right. So, my, upon first reading all this 10 days ago, I was inclined to think that the board should put a condition on its approval, saying that in 12 months, the headmaster should send us a note affirmatively asserting that full compliance with these expectations had been achieved. And frankly, with the other schools as well. Because it's all the same kind of line. In the light of what you're saying, in the light of the conversation we had with people about simplifying things, I'm inclined to sort of back off that for now. I don't want to make you people some kind of whipping boys for an ongoing statewide concern that almost all schools are, are failing to comply with.
We set this precedent, we'll be fine.
We'd have to say this to everybody.
Yeah.
And maybe some, I think, once we get through this, the changing of the whole ecosystem of, of special education, there may come a time then when we have to.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think of the difference between monitoring versus auditing. So, we go in on a monitoring basis, which is, it sounds like the, the financial review team did to Compass School. You're there to set up a benchmark and provide them some goals and support. Whereas an auditing visit is more about getting a finding and getting tagged or something. So, monitor, an important function that we provide of monitoring is one of support, that we go in and sample paperwork and provide feedback. It's not, it's not designed to be punitive. When we come in on an auditing basis, it can be punitive. But it's important that monitoring function is an important way to ensure compliance. It has to be done regularly. And that's something we, as I mentioned, we have to design in concert with review of 173.
Yeah, I, I was looking for just an affirmative self-certification. Not that anybody would go back and, but we just do it on the word of the head of school, which ought to, which ought to matter a lot to us. But the motion before us, if I understand it, is to accept the recommendation as it is written. Are you ready for that question?
Yes.
Yes? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I need to vote, and I vote aye. The motion carries. The Linden Institute's approval has, for four years, has been granted by the board. No, no further conditions other than the usual one about, tell us about any big changes. Great, thank you. I think we can get through the next two. Well, let's hear from the, do you refer to it as the Fayhoney Knop Memorial School? Or is there a shorter way to refer to it?
FHJ.
FH?
FHJ.
Okay, FHK. You now, board members, you have in front of you J2, which is for the FHJ approval. Is there a motion?
Can we make a motion to accept the secretary's recommended action for FHK?
Is there a second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded that the board accepts the secretary's recommended action, being that the State Board of Education grant year around general and special education independent school approval to serve a maximum, so on and so forth, for a period of five years through June 30, 2024, together with the standard condition that you notify the Agency of Education within five business days whenever any changes occur in the usual things. You've seen this language before, I think, in your present approval. Is there any discussion of the motion?
How long has the school been in business?
The school, I mean, Howard Center operation has been in business for six, four, nine, eight years. And prior to that, we contracted it as the Fayhoney Knop Memorial School. And that will be over 27 years.
Right, nay. Any other discussion or questions?
I have a question, just on the last page and the communication with the LEA. And not necessarily having, you know, smooth systems in place for that, is, is the obligation on both parts so that the line of communication, does it originate with the independent school, with the LEA? And, and how is that managed?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think, you know, the, what we're finding particularly, you know, as we investigate 173, that'll, there's a chunk of work under 173 that'll relate to independent school regulation. One of the things we sort of fundamentally land on is that LEAs have a responsibility to implement and provide faith, you know, and that, that, that responsibility cannot be enacted similarly with independent schools. Ultimately, we would go to the LEA to, to make sure that's being taken care of appropriately. Once again, there, this would appear here as part of an approval process, but a monitoring would be catching the LEA in that documentation. Ultimately, they're responsible for that piece of it.
So, this.
So, their special ed director would be ensuring that paperwork would be driving the change.
Improvement in that area.
That's correct. Because they ultimately have the contracting responsibility to ensure special ed's being complied with.
That's okay. Thank you.
That would be mine.
Other discussion?
Yes. PHI. At the time of the review, FHK did not provide a system that would allow the confirmation of IEP service delivery. And it looks like a special education school. How can we have a system that doesn't confirm the IEP service?
They did provide the materials on 624 in the following sentence.
Yeah, they subsequently furnished that. Normally, schools are given an opportunity to respond. And that's what you see.
What am I missing?
At the time of the review, FHK did not provide a system that would allow the confirmation of IEP service delivery. Supplemental materials provided on 624 documentation where context is resolved. Supplemental materials also demonstrated the updates, the electronic goods.
I think it's too far enough.
No, it's, yeah. It's basically the same, you know, it's documentation issues is throughout all of these. It's just the complex system, the documentation.
Very similar theme.
Yeah.
And in this case, there was some documentation that showed that at least with regard to that information from LEA, the problem actually had either been corrected or didn't exist again. Other questions or comments? Are you ready for the question? Those in favor of the motion to adopt the secretary's recommended action with regard to FHJ, FHK School, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, myself included, thank you. And finally, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Brookhaven Learning Center. Is there a motion with regard to Brookhaven Learning Center, item J3? It's been moved, is there a second?
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded that the board adopt the secretary's recommended action with, with regard to the Brookhaven Learning Center, which is that the State Board of Education grant renewal of general and special education independent school approval to serve a maximum of eight male resident students, 14-day students, for a period of five years, ending 30 June, 2024. And that approval is conditional upon the requirement that school reports to the agency any changes with regard to progress policies, et cetera, language you've seen before. Is there discussion? Are you ready to move? Those in favor of adopting a proposal on the secretary's recommended action, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You have adopted the secretary's recommended action. Thank you for being here. Board, it's, we're a little past the schedule, but we will adjourn for about 10 minutes and come back for a discussion about our retreat. So, we did skip over the NASB discussion. I think that's, we can make that comparatively brief. But let's just do a time check. It's now 12 after 3:00. We want to be out of this room no later than 4:00 o'clock because we need to leave Connor time to break down his equipment and be out of here by 4:30. We, sorry?
Is that enough time? That's half an hour.
Yeah. He's already taken down some of them. Let's, but we don't have to stay until 4:00. We can finish up sooner, it's okay. So, let's just, we, so we have two, two things to do. One is to discuss NASB and, if possible, come to a conclusion about it. And then, second, to go on to the item on the agenda called Retreat Planning. And that's probably a pretty flexible conversation. So, about NASB, you received, I think, two pieces of paper. Well, you received, you received the NASB invoice dated 15 June. Oh, okay. So, it must be, must be on a half-year cycle or something like that. And that invoice shows that the total of the NASB dues is $25,000. I just, for the heck of it, took a look at the board's budget, which is always the last piece in your package. Item, in this case, item M. And NASB is listed there under dues. We budgeted 20, which is more than what we spent last year. And it, the, the actual would-be $25,000 had we spent. Just notice that that's $25,000 of a $91,000 budget, which is to say about 22% of our entire budget is dedicated to NASB. And if we didn't spend that money, well, we could talk about how we would spend it. What are your thoughts?
I say no.
What does no mean?
That we, we do not, we don't, we don't participate with NASB.
So, withdraw from NASB?
Yes.
And say thanks, but no thanks with you.
Yes, that is a motion.
Oh, it's been, oh, okay. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the State Board of Education withdraw its membership in NASB effective immediately. And parenthetically, and not pay anything on this invoice. Correct?
Correct.
Discussion?
If they come back with an offer at a lower price, do we want to entertain it or be done with it?
We've done that before.
We've done that before, that's correct. And the next year, we got hit with a pretty high bill.
Yeah. Even though they wind and dine us, I, I think that you don't need to do it again.
Yeah, I'm not sure they wind and dine us. I think we wind and dine them.
We did, we break bread together, I remember that.
Yeah, but John did that.
Right, yeah, we included him on our wild and crazy cocktail party. Okay. Is there further discussion?
I guess.
Yes.
I can't speak to know what value they add for the little time I've been here, but I think about occasions where I'd like for us to know what other states are doing. And I don't know if this is the resource we would use to do that. So, when we think about special ed block grant or other areas where we benefit from knowing process and procedure and policy or conflict of interest or, you know, other bodies of work, I, I just don't know enough to know if they are a resource for such things or we would have other resources in reaching out directly to those other states, bodies directly or through our attorneys. I don't know that answer, but I'd love it if somebody else does know.
Well, the secretary mentioned, and maybe you'd like to say about the CCSSO.
Yeah, there, I think there's other opportunities for you to network on a national level that we could plug into, plug you into and not spend nearly as what you're spending here for dues. And I mentioned at the last meeting, our Association of Chief State School Officers has an annual conference in April, usually in DC. It's called our Legislative Conference, where I noticed this year, that was the first time I've attended, but there were folks there from, there were state board members. There were a lot of other different people there. I thought it was very useful, if you're interested in federal education policy, because it brought over a lot of people from the US Department of Education, including the commissioner or secretary. And so, if you're interested in that kind of setting. And I know the legislature, legislators attend a policy forum. They attended an education policy forum in Colorado. So, there's other things going on nationally that you might want to consider. But I think there's, so, I would offer at least to, to make you aware of the CCSSO as a resource.
One regulation, they have never been forthcoming. We needed something, possibly we could have gone to them, but there's nothing that they are offering, you know, as such.
NASB.
That's right.
Yeah. I mean, they did have, as I mentioned before, perhaps, they do provide a new board member orientation, which I did do it two, two years ago. And I found it useful. What I found most useful was just chatting with other board members from other states, just to learn a little bit about how they organize themselves and the nature of their work. But every state is different. And as you know, in many states, the state board members are elected. So, it's, it's different.
I've been a fan of NASB for some time, but I'm slowing down a little on that. The Education Commission of the States could be a good source. The Council of State Governments could be a good source. When it comes to research, I don't find NASB to be on the front leading edge. They tend to have people who are part of think tanks who come in with a very biased point of view, wanting to sell whatever is popular. And so, for research purposes, I go to the primary sources in my work, but that doesn't include NASB. It's mostly secondary and I just don't like the bias I get. But they're a great bunch of people.
Are we, would we be, like, do, does every other New England state participate?
No.
Okay.
I, I think the membership is probably around 35 to 40 states.
So, you want to call New Hampshire directly or not directly?
Oh, yeah. I'll do it.
There is a New England branch, but it's mostly controlled by Connecticut.
Is there further discussion? Are you ready for the motion? Those in favor of the motion to terminate our membership in NASB, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And you have directed the chair to communicate to NASB that we are terminating our membership. Agimi, okay, I'll do that. Before we move on to retreat planning, is there anything else that we need to be talking about? is there anything else that we need to be talking about? Okay. I have, I would just say I have talked with some of you about putting together a subgroup of the whole board to be the board's eyes, ears, and brains on the subject of Act 173 and to become, sort of, to strengthen our core knowledge about the moving parts on Act 173, have a better understanding of what the agency's documentation is starting to look like, a better understanding of what the various stakeholders are trying to communicate. Just so that we have at least some of us with a deeper reservoir of knowledge about where this is all moving. So, I think we'll, we'll firm those plans up in the, in the future. And if anybody whom I've not spoken to is interested in serving on that sort of working group of the board, please let me know. Then let's move on to the topic called Retreat Planning. I guess there are three things that, at least three things, or maybe four, that would make up what we do in the retreat. I should say that in prior retreats, our former Chair, who's, comes from a different background than I, has devised some very nice get-to-know-you games and other exercises.
I can do that.
Oh, you can?
I can do that.
Oh.
I could do that for sure.
You could do it?
They're sort of fun. And, and, and...
We having fun here, aren't we making over that?
He's always doing that.
And, and no harm comes from it. Maybe, well, maybe a little embarrassment, but it, it's probably good for us. So, we'll talk.
Okay.
The Vice Chair and I will consult. And Peter, I'll try to keep the brakes on.
Please.
We have some expertise in the agency on this topic as well. We could offer, if you'd like, oh, we have, yes, we have some consulting.
Maybe we could do a drink cocktail.
Yeah. The one I remember, and I think it was done kind of over lunch, was write down something about your past that no one on the board would imagine. Do you remember that?
That was pretty good.
That was pretty fun. And it is nice to get to know each other a little bit. I remember the one that I never forgot was that Stacy Weinberger, who is kind of all-woman, all-lady, turns out to have been a jock in high school and college. I mean, she was a very accomplished athlete and who didn't know. So, other, so, I can see that our Vice Chair will handle that for us. One piece of our conversation, I, I would like to suggest that we pick up on what I think the board started some time ago, which is fully evolving in the direction given to us by Act 98. That is to say, Act 98 totally reinvented the board. And perhaps we've been a bit slow to pick up on all of its meanings. And so, we might, we might carry that conversation further. Now, Bill's not very happy with what Act 98 did, but it is, is that fair to say?
I don't know, okay.
But there's no turning the clock back on it until we get that statute rescinded. And my thought is that, that, as we've discussed some, we, we do have, apart from Act 98, there's a whole bunch of details in law that requires to do certain things. I mean, one of them is we're required to do approvals of independent school. And we just spent a fair hunk of our day doing that. It seems to me that the board could consider wishing to shed some of those duties. Now, to do so, of course, would require changes in law. But if the board can, came to a conclusion that wanted to shed certain of these legislative obligations, obligations placed upon us by the legislature, we could go to the General Assembly in December with, or to the committees in December, and ask them to formulate statutory changes that free us from some of these obligations, if that's the census, sense of the board. What would be the point of doing that, of course, unless we had something better to do? And, and that gets to be the other part of the conversation. And I, I think we sort of started to touch upon that some in our June discussion. Several of you kind of resonated with the idea of the board being less reactive and more proactive, taking a few key themes or characteristics of education in this state and being the focus for discussion about advancing the state's agenda with regard to those things. So, I, I would be delighted if the June, if our, if our retreat helped us flesh out those ideas so that we saw not only what we would stop doing, but what we would start doing. And it's the old, yes, Bill?
That presupposes a discussion of, about the role of the board first.
Yes.
And if we decide that, then it's...
That's correct.
Right.
And I think where we start there is with existing statutes. Plus, what does Act 98, how does Act 98 change the game? And of course, it did change the game significantly.
I was just...
Yes.
I was just looking to see if somewhere there was like a sentence that sort of guides us as we think about roles and responsibilities and aside from the entirety of the language of Act 98. But, so, just on the agency's website, it says State Board of Ed is responsible for the establishment, advancement, and evaluation of public education policy. So, I, that three-pronged approach might be a guide for how we start to think about our work. Just a thought. And if there's better language or something else that guides us, it'd help to start from a place of our statement of purpose, I think, and then work from there to the, what we think that looks like. If we're doing that, what does it look like? What is our role in that? Because the evaluation piece of it, we get periodic reports in my short tenure, but I'm not sure that we're seeing sort of comprehensive sort of look back and evaluation on where we are with implementation of Act 77 or any of the others. I'm not sure to what extent we are doing that piece.
It was establishment, evaluation, and...
Establishment, advancement, and evaluation of public education policy. So, there are some things we don't do anymore. We don't oversee the agency. But I think to the extent we're still responsible for these things, how does that work when we aren't directing Dan?
Right. And the word establishing, the phrase establishing state education policy, that, that's a very broad phrase. And I think frankly, it's inaccurate.
I think that's in law.
The legislature's...
I don't know.
Well, I know you like that phrase, but I think the legislature, the last time this board tried to write new policy about education, it got its knuckles wrapped pretty hard. Act, Rule 2200.
Now, when have we ever tried?
Well, some people, okay, we'll come to that. We'll have that discussion.
It was really just a suggestion.
We need to wait for Oliver to get here.
If he does.
If you look at the law, it has high-flown language, such as was just written.
It does, yes.
And then it has the biggest list of nuts and bolts, mechanical stuff.
Yes, right, exactly.
And we did get that list a number of months ago. Maybe the new members, maybe we should get that again because it's fine printed and it goes on for pages.
Right. Emily gave us quite a good compilation of statutes. And I would, I would make sure that we get that reset before the meeting. Because people, you know, it's a very long list of, of duties.
How many sub-words?
How many? That, that is the only sentence on this one page. So, I, I'm sure, I was just looking for a place to start my thinking on...
On 95?
Then, if you click on State Board of Ed, it does go to the powers and duties of the board, include making regulations, governing attendance, records of attendance of all pupils, standards for student performance, adult basic ed programs, approval of independent schools, disbursement of funds, equal access for students to a quality education. And that it's outlined in the State Board of Ed rules. A lot of those nuts and bolts, those things that came in the beginning, don't resonate with me on those three things that I read in that first sentence. So, but certainly the last, equal access for all students, Vermont students to a quality education, is, feels like it aligns with the idea of advancement and establishment and monitoring of, you know, the purpose of education in the state of Vermont or however. I don't know. So, I don't know if we have a vision ourselves. Does the agency have a vision? We wouldn't want to be working at odds. But I do think to the extent we have responsibility for monitoring and we know we don't make the laws, so we know that we're not really doing one of those things.
Right.
It may help us to think about that and then define what our roles and responsibilities are in meeting those obligations.
Right.
Then we can figure out the stuff that really doesn't make sense, that it is consuming time, when it's taking time away from some of that look back on how we're doing in progress towards, you know, equitable educational opportunities for all students or the bigger things we really care about.
I think if I may, I think what we're trying to say is that we've been reactive and we'd like to become more proactive.
Exactly.
And, and I think we could do it. I think it's needed. And, and thereby, I'd like to see us strengthen our, our presence in the legislation regarding this, you know. But anyway, I think, I think it should be a healthy discussion. If we, if we each picked up three priorities, what we'd like to see attended to or whatever, and come prepared to talk about them however we want to be assigned in advance.
Should we look at the strategic plan? That's, the strategic plan that's, does it expire? What happens if it goes from 2015 to 2019? Does it expire?
Yeah, that's, that's just one of many elements where our website is remarkably out of date. And, and we haven't, we on the board haven't done a very good job of keeping our website reflective of even what we agreed on the last two years, you know, about whatever our strategic values, for example. That's not on the, that's not on the website.
Well, we had two goals on our strategic plan. It's here. I just don't know if that, is that a guiding document? Has it been?
Is that a what?
In theory, a strategic plan would be a guiding document. Has that been the case as it relates to the State Board of Ed? And would that be an approach we would take?
I go back to what you and Peter said in terms of, we have to define what we want the role of the board to be first.
Right.
Then see what that sugar's all in terms of these specifics. But until we get a picture of where we're going, we're, we're not steering our own ship. A couple of things I think we ought to look at, in addition to the role of the board, would be the future. Because what the educational system's going to look like in 2030 is a whole lot different than what it looks like today. Think about artificial intelligence and everything else.
I fail to anticipate artificial intelligence in my design document, but I came pretty close to articulating that 2030 vision, though I think it'll probably be here sooner rather than later. Anyway, just...
Well, yeah. The whole concept of buildings, curriculum, activities, everything that we know, I think is going to change. And that's also going to change the nature of the accountability system from EQS to something else. And I think we should be on the leading edge on that.
Although change has not come quickly to this institution of education.
Yeah, I just think the overriding demographic context and a few other things are just forcing it to adapt. So, to Bill's point, it'd be better in terms of our goals if we could inform that as opposed to just watch it collapse.
Well, I hope so because the democratic shift is only getting exasperated and not much is being done about it.
To that end, the notion, and maybe this comes into the conversation around strategic plan, because in addition to defining our roles and responsibilities, we probably also want to maybe have a couple of things that are sort of goals or focus for our work that when we're not having to react to the requirements. So, it would be, I think, a good conversation to continue that idea of safe learning environments and that which the woman who came and spoke earlier sort of pointed us to in a holistic way around social-emotional learning and those outside of your traditional curriculum areas that support learning in schools. And to what extent is that something we want to think about in shining a light on it? Worthy maybe of a conversation?
It's going to be more important than the COVID. It really will.
That seems to be the direction. And some schools, I think, are moving in that direction. And with the resources and others, maybe less so. So, maybe it's important to at least consider it within our strategic goals or whatever, however we end up sugaring out a plan for the year or the next four years.
I would just suggest that if, if we wish to become more proactive, we will need to be willing to shed the reactive stuff. I mean, it's the old business, if you want me to do this, what are you willing to have me stop doing? Because we, we don't, we don't have the bandwidth to do, to put in more time and energy than we have. We just want to shift the focus of it. And the other piece of this is that I think that we, if we wish to become more proactive, we will need eventually to adopt some discipline about what we're going to be proactive about and not proactive about everything. And then finally, we have to think about, what does it mean to be proactive? What's the process we're going to use? Are we going to sit around and just talk to each other about the way we think things are going to be? Or are we going to convene expertise and seek to synthesize it? And, and if we were to do that, could we all do that as homework? Or would we need staff to work with us and so forth? So, there's, those are, those are all the things that I think would ultimately come out of a conversation.
With very limited resources.
Yeah, right. Presently, very limited resources. And then the question gets to be, well, if we're determined to do this and if we're determined that we need a half-a-million-dollar budget to do it, then we set about doing our best to make that happen and figure out how to do that.
Well, ultimately, we have to convince the people that reside in this building.
You got to start with the government. He writes the budget. You guys always go to the legislature. The budget's got written by the executive branch. Hmm?
He's got an office in this building.
Oh, wow. Ceremony. We're not interested in ceremony conversation. I mean, we are an executive branch agency. So, anyway, we can talk about how to go about getting the money. So far, the board has been remarkably unsuccessful in doing so. So, doing the same of what we've been doing isn't, doesn't seem like a formula for success.
Has the board typically had, like, come out of a retreat with a work plan for the year? Or I just, I'm so able to keep asking these questions.
Right. It sort of has. But frankly, the, and I'm as guilty of this as anybody, the follow-through has been kind of, kind of weak. For example, we came out of one of the meetings with the idea of a strategic plan, but we really never got past sort of a strategic vision. And even that was rather poorly developed. And I'm, I probably am largely at fault for that. So, I think we've got to set ourselves some achievable goals. And frankly, I think we're all going to have to dig in a little deeper in doing work outside meetings, making calls, making arrangements.
Research.
Researching, getting budgets, all that stuff. I, I think if we want to actually amount to much, we'll probably have to put in more effort than we've been putting in. But that's again for discussion.
Again, I'm going to be naive. I don't... I don't necessarily think it starts with worrying about where the money's coming from, and I'm just going to use my sort of regular school board hat in thinking about a process for retreat and planning for a year, and you set goals, and you check in on those, and you look at a work... Or we have looked at a work plan that kind of aligns with, like, if we want to know what students' outcomes are and how that's going, we know... We get a sense of when that data becomes available. So, as a board, for the course of the year, we would put on our work plan, the clarity around agenda planning, that that was going to come up at a particular time. So, in looking at the agency's work plans that Dan shared with us, there may be times of which, you know, that very clearly becomes part of the agenda planning and may align particular goals that we have on accountability and checking in on progress on policies or however we frame it. But those links happen because it's intentional, and when we're getting these reports rather than them being isolated, data points, they're connected to the bigger picture, and we sort of frame it that way on an agenda so that we're thinking about it. Just a thought in how we would do it if we were in regular school board planning mode. And that kind of helps with the year.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily create a four-year strategic plan like you all had before, but that might naturally at least be a start for something.
Right. Just to put a different slant on all of this entirely, I received a letter from the Sunset Advisory Commission. This is a group, almost every state has one of these, that scans the universe of state boards and entities like us and asks the question, does this group need to exist? It's a great question. And so, I've been... I was asked to appear before that group sometime in the next week or two, and I wrote to them and said, "Well, I ain't even the chair, number one, and number two, I wouldn't dream of speaking to you until I've gotten some directions from the board." They ask questions and would like answers to questions such as, "How well is this board or commission performing in executing its purpose? And what evidence can you provide to substantiate that performance? If that purpose is still needed, can state government be more effective and efficient if the purpose was executed in a different manner?" You can see where this is all going. These are good questions. I mean, they're fair questions, and my hope would be, among other things during our discussion... I will circulate these questions to you, that you reach enough of a consensus in your answers to these questions that I could appear before the board, because I will have to, and give an answer that represents the perspective of this board, not just my own.
Is this a state...
Yeah, this is a state agency.
State.
It's created by the General Assembly. They've... They're probably talking to all kinds of folks like us, as well they are. I mean, that's fair game. Just because we've been around for 100 years doesn't mean we should be around for 101, in my personal view, but I think you have to justify your existence. So, that's just a detail of our work at the retreat is to be able to respond to questions such as this. I'll send it to you. I'll also send to you the package that I think Emily sent around about state law that dictates that we attend to this and to that. And you can scan that and say what you're willing to petition the General Assembly to relieve us of. Your thoughts?
Do you have the opportunity to appear before them after the retreat?
I've told them I will not appear before them until the retreat is completed.
Okay.
No, it sounds great. I mean, on a personal note, I am leaving the retreat early on the second day to attend a meeting with the Superintendent's Association, but I would forward to participate.
We'll save all the good stuff for then.
Well, you know, I think at least the singing song part. Those things are mostly done best at the end of an event.
That'll be done early, early on.
I enjoy those things to a point.
That's why you need to leave early.
Yeah. But I think it's a good time of work, and I look forward to supporting you.
Just for planning purposes, when do you think you need to leave?
Suzanne, do you know what time?
Yes.
I want to say noonish on the second day, but...
Right, because you have to travel to Chittenden County somewhere.
Yeah, they're Chittenden County somewhere.
So, noon...
Lake Maury?
From Lake Maury.
Yeah.
Chittenden County from Lake Maury.
So, that means I have to leave around noon, I think.
Okay.
So, but I think we'll at least have the morning on the retreat part.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think certainly if we can... The work plan itself is... The policy work plan is really just a sort of articulation of the work of the status quo. To Bill's point, I think there would be a useful role, just sort of a dispassionate diagnosis of our context, to put you in a position to think more about the future, you know, because no... I wouldn't say no one's doing that right now, but it's a need because we... The way our policies develop in the legislature tends to be very reactionary. And, you know, we're certainly trying to wrap our arms around some major structural changes, but those structural changes are pointing my diagnosis right now into really develop school districts as better systems, you know, that if that's the future of maintaining particularly our small schools, then that's fine, but we still need to think a little farther out. So, I think it would be useful to try to position the board in that area. It's an intriguing idea, and I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, destinations really matter.
Yeah.
There's that old saying that if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there.
Especially there's so many changes going. I mean, we can... I think we can realistically say there's fundamental change in the air due to constructive education, technology, knowledge, you name it. So, there's... It's a fundamentally different context. To think that we would still do accountability or monitoring based on 19th century approaches is just... It's not going to happen that way.
Right.
So, why would we do that way?
Right.
And I must say, I think our work on 46 has contributed.
You've set the stage for that. It's been necessary. But then the question is, so what... Where does it go, you know? So, I think there's an important role for the board in that regard, to convene those conversations. Where I, you know, and I'll make the contribution on the other end, I think to keep you involved with the regulatory things is not useful necessarily. There's an element, and I think you've identified already, where it's actually problematic. So, there's... But anyway, I look forward to helping you with that work.
Thank you.
I think it's timely.
Thank you. Just to refresh your recollection for the new members, typically, the so-called retreat is a two-part thing. It's a board meeting, a regular monthly board meeting, which will happen this year on a Wednesday, the 18th of September, not very far away, closer... It's what, three weeks away or less. And typically, that board meeting is over by two or so, and then we're doing the agenda on that tomorrow morning, I think.
Okay.
By telecon. And then, from 2:00 on, we move into the retreat part. We work until about 5:00, and then resume at 9:00, 8:30 or 9:00 the next morning, and go until about 2:00. And so, the day, the second day, Thursday, ends earlier than a usual board meeting does. So, we'll have the better part of virtually a whole day for retreat, part of Wednesday and a large part of Thursday. The evening, provisions will be made for you to stay over at Lake Maury. You'll each have your own room. And a social piece will be that where my wife, Nan, and I will be hosting sort of a social hour at our home. Some people would call it a cocktail party, but we certainly don't expect people necessarily to drink, and we will make sure that there are designated drivers. So, you remember, we did this, was it last year?
I think it was.
Yeah. So, it's an easy drive, and we'll make sure people... We'll have maybe just two cars to get us all down to our home. We'll visit there, and then we'll return by 7:30 to Lake Maury where we will have dinner.
Could you guys stay right behind you because it isn't an easy place to find.
It's true. It's true. You either drop bread crumbs or just ride my bumper. Right. Anything else we need to cover?
We had mentioned potentially considering guidelines around...
Ah, yes.
...like the interests.
Yeah, that's before you came, I announced that we would take that up at the retreat. That'll be something we'll cover. We may do that actually after you're gone, Dan, since it's really not something that has any bearing upon a state employee. And so, we'll take that up. Anything else to bring to our attention? Okay. Then, I think we are done. Thank you for covering a lot of ground today. Thank you especially for that discussion with special... About special education. I felt that was... They were good. I think we were good.
And I think the operative word is "we." There was a lot of "we's."
Yeah, 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 yeah. Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you for... For state leadership.
I know.
Such as it is. It's all downhill from here, right? Anything else? We're all set. Thank you.